We are live. You can get started, ma'am.
All right, we'll go ahead and bring this meeting of the Alamo County Planning Commission, April 26, 2022 to order. May we have the roll call?
Yes. Mr. Claiborne?
Here.
Mr. Bivins?
Here.
Mr. Karazana?
Here.
Ms. Firehawk?
Here.
Mr. Missile?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. A quorum has been established. Today, we are here to cover a number of different matters. But the first item that we have is other matters that are not on the agenda that someone would wish to speak to. So these are for matters that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the commission on an item not on the agenda? I don't see anyone. Is there anyone online? Okay. All right, I will close that. And we'll move on. I want to note that tonight is a hybrid meeting. This is a new format that we have established after COVID. So we have people speaking in person, and then we also have the opportunity to speak remotely so people can zoom into the meeting. So I just need to read this brief announcement. The opportunities for the public to access and participate in the hybrid meeting are posted on the Admiral County website, on the Planning Commission's homepage, and on the Admiral County calendar. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on those matters, which comments from the public will be received. All right, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda on the next seat. Sheet, sorry. Does anyone wish to pull anything forward? All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some moves.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? We'll do a roll call.
Yep, I'll do the roll.
Thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
Hi.
Mr. Missile?
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk?
Hi.
Mr. Karazana?
Hi.
Mr. Bivins?
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne?
Hi.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the next item for a public hearing, which is ZMA 2021-100013, Southwood Phase Two. Before we begin, though, I want to give a few rules of order, just to help us have a smooth meeting. So normally, we have three minutes for each speaker to tell us what they came to say. And we ask that you introduce yourself and tell us where you live. You don't have to give us the exact address. If you have an interpreter, if you're using an interpreter, then you may have six minutes so that you have time for your comments to be relayed to us after you've stated them. So we'll be making sure to distinguish between a single speaker and someone who is speaking with the aid of an interpreter. I'll also try to give options for the interpreter to interpret what we're saying back to the audience. So we may want to just keep that in mind. I myself often talk quickly, so I'll try not to do that. And then the other thing I wish to ask of everyone, and this is a normal thing that we have, which is a lot of times when someone is speaking and you wish to show support for that, but you're not yourself planning to get up and speak. If you like to show support, you could just raise your hand. We prefer that instead of cheering or clapping. So, you know, we would like you to just raise your hand if you're in support. If you don't want to support it and you want to do thumbs down, that's fine. But we want to limit the amount of noise from the audience so that we can hear the speakers who are up at the podium. Okay? So the normal process then is for a staff report to be given. Then we follow that with questions from the Planning Commission up here. Then we have a presentation by the applicant. We can then ask the applicant questions. And then we have comments from all of you who are here to speak this evening. We will also be going in the order of people who are here in person speaking first. And if there are people who are on Zoom or online who also are dialing in to speak, we'll do them second. So those are the main things that I just wanted to convey. All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and move forward with opening the public hearing, and may we have the staff report for ZMA 2021-10013, Southwood Phase Two.
Thank you very much. I just need to get my presentation pulled up because this was the applicants. Good evening. I'm Rebecca Ragsdale, and I'm a Planning Manager in the Department of Community Development. And I'll be guiding us through this presentation this evening. This is my first time back in the boardroom. So it's nice to see you all. With me this evening are some other staff that are available to answer questions. Kevin McDermott, our Transportation Planner. Transportation Planning Manager will be presenting the transportation portion of the presentation. And then Stacy Pethia is also here to answer any questions about affordable housing and grants and some of the other information we'll cover this evening. As you mentioned, this is a public hearing. The Planning Commission will be making their recommendation. You may choose to approve this application, approve with conditions, disapprove, or if the item was to be deferred, that would only be at the applicant's request. But the public hearing has been requested this evening. So we want to give you a little bit more background than we typically do. There's a lot of history with Southwood. I think the applicant will primarily cover, primarily, excuse me. Sometimes I tend to talk too fast as well. The applicant will primarily cover that. We'll give you a brief update on Phase One. The board received an update last week. The Planning Commission last received an update in September. And some of you were not on the commission at that time, so we want to cover some of that background. And then we will go over briefly the proposed rezoning and staff analysis and our recommendations before the applicant gives their presentation. We talk a lot a bit, excuse me, we talk a lot about Phase Two versus Phase One. This is a location map to orient everyone. Phase One is along Old Lynchburg Road. It's highlighted with the yellow Phase One labels. And then Phase Two is the entirety of the Mobile Home Park itself. So this will be redevelopment of the Mobile Home Park, whereas Phase One was undeveloped property at the time. It is off of Old Lynchburg Road, and then Hickory Street runs through Phase Two out to the Oak Hill neighborhood and eventually Stagecoach and Fifth Street. And then Biscuit Run Park is to the south. That background I mentioned does not by any means cover the full history of Southwood, even before Habitat acquired it in 2007. But I did want to hit some of the highlights in terms of some of the key milestones of county actions that have been associated with Southwood and the support that has continued to Phase One with this project. That has included the action plan that was put in place before the Phase One rezoning was acted on and the performance agreement for Phase One. Phase One was under review for a longer period of time than this rezoning has been under review. It was actually under review from February 2018 to June 2019 and included a number of resubmittals and work sessions. Ultimately, it was approved in August 2019. And we'll go over a little bit about the highlights of the Phase One rezoning. Phase One is 33.96 acres and was approved for a maximum of 450 units and a maximum of 50,000 square feet of non-residential and included 12 blocks, which was also inclusive of green space blocks that had a number of amenities and trails planned throughout the neighborhood. This is the Phase One overall site plan. This was part of the update to the board. What's highlighted with the yellow dashing is what's approved and under construction, which includes improved Hickory Street, the new road Horizon, and then Village One is under construction. Village Two and the remaining blocks are still under review but are approaching final site plan and plat approvals. It ended up being 335 units that were approved and then 211 of which are affordable. And I expect Habitat will have some more details in their presentation. Construction has began. This picture is from a couple of weeks ago. I'm sure if you go out there, it will look a little bit different, but this is, again, some of the things that are happening in Village One and with Hickory Street. Stormwater's, excuse me, stormwater utilities, new roads to access Village One. I mentioned the performance agreement. Many of those milestones have been met and are expected to be met with Phase One. The performance agreement is only in place for Phase One, so this is the funding of 3.2 million that has been in place. There's also an additional 675,000 that was approved by the board to support planning efforts in Phase One. With the update to the board last week, there was a recommendation of continued support. It's in the future recommendations for the 2023 budget, which would support the apartments in Phase One and also assist with relocation of the residents as redevelopment occurs. So we're going to shift to the details of Phase Two now. Again, which is the parcels outlined in yellow, which are about 93.32 acres. Phase Two is proposing between 527 units and 1,000 units. This is in addition to Phase One that's already been approved. There are 227 minimum units that are approved. Unfortunately, there was a typo in some places that indicated 271. I apologize for that. It is 227. There's the additional 60 that are proffered in terms of low-income housing tax credits. And you will see as we go through the presentation, some of the planning work that the residents have been undertaking is carried through throughout the Phase Two proposal in terms of the blocks, the open space blocks. There are two transit stops that are proposed. This is an overview of the zoning. The property is Zone R2 Residential, which is one of our lower-density zoning districts. The darker green is the existing Phase One area that was rezoned to neighborhood model. And then the rural area is shown in white. Adjacent is Biscuit Run Park. The future land use recommendations that we talked about in a great deal in the staff report include an urban density residential designation, parks and green systems that are consistent with areas that should be preserved, green space areas that should be preserved. And then also the recommendation that there be a neighborhood center near Hickory Street that would provide non-residential uses, including neighborhood-level serving uses. So we found that the proposal, once we get into it, is primarily consistent with these recommendations, but we do have concerns about the neighborhood center. So this is the block plan that I mentioned, which is a continuation of the neighborhood planning efforts and all of the work that the existing residents are doing to design their community. And it continues the block pattern and the transect concept, if you will, where the higher intensity uses are located internal along Hickory Street, continuing the neighborhood center special area to provide a potential neighborhood center, and then lower-density residential uses along the edges of the development. So with the neighborhood model rezoning, application plan is a requirement of the ordinance, as is the code of development. And then anything additional that the developer may offer in terms of additional requirements are in the form of the proffers that you have in your packet. There is a great deal of planning work, as I said, that has continued. These are block regulations. Staff felt that everything was very well covered in terms of blockage regulations, building height, form and height, and the block layout itself and the uses within each of the blocks. Now, there is no minimum non-residential proposed. So there are maximums in Phase One and Phase Two, but no minimum commitment to a square footage to provide that center. In terms of green space and amenities with the neighborhood model development, we use the term green space and amenities more generally, you know, usually referred to as open space by some. So they're providing that 20% of the green space that's required, and then it's designed and dispersed throughout the community in terms of the different level of amenities. Amenities are those places where you would see the active recreation. In addition to the amenities and green space, there is another section of the ordinance that covers active recreation areas, playgrounds. And it has sort of a number of playgrounds you're supposed to provide, a number of basketball courts, depending on the number of units that are built. So there's no waiver request to that. Some of the active amenities that they've proposed may serve as substitutes, but they will be providing the minimum recreation that's required in the ordinance. Also shown on this map in red arrows are the trail connections that have been proposed to the adjoining Biscuit Run Park. They've also proposed, offered the 10-space multipurpose lot that could serve a number of purposes, supporting the trail, but also acting as sort of an outdoor market space or commuter lot or commercial vehicle spaces. And that would be located, shown on here potentially, Block 29 or Block 30 at the bottom of the screen. Or, and in lieu of that, construction of the trail, excuse me, in lieu of construction of the parking lot, there would be the offer of $50,000. And again, we mentioned the connection to Biscuit Run Park. This is just showing you the relationship of the Mobile Home Park and the trail connections. It's also showing what is planned in the Biscuit Run master plan as far as future trailhead and park access that's recommended and planned from Hickory Street. Now, this portion of the presentation, as I mentioned, would be done by Kevin McDermott, our Transportation Planner. And then I'll pick up again with some of our other information we'd like to cover.
Thank you. Kevin McDermott, I'm Planning Manager in charge of the Transportation Planning Program. I reviewed the application from a, looking at the transportation issues. I'll start by saying that the code of development and the application plan provided the network connectivity, the street design, the layouts, everything that we would expect to see from there, standards as well. And it was really well-developed, provided a high level of connectivity internally, showed sidewalks throughout the whole network, so a lot of pedestrian connectivity. And the two exterior connections from either end of Hickory, that's really all that's available except for the connection over to Phase One, which was also made. So it's a well-developed street network that was provided. There was also a transportation impact analysis provided to staff as required. We require those for anything over 1,000 vehicles per day being generated. This one, Phase Two, was generating approximately 4,400 trips per day. So that was provided, and so I'll go through some of the findings with that. The, just for background, the Old Lynchburg Fifth Street Extended Corridor currently carries between 8,000 vehicles in the southern portion to, pull up my laser pointer here so it can make it a little easier. So around 8,000 vehicles per day in the southern section down here and closer to 15,000 as you get around the I-64 interchange. This corridor we've identified as being constrained. This has been identified in the previous TIA for Phase One as well as other TIAs that were done in the area and a recent STAR study conducted by VDOT. A few of the intersections, the intersection with Old Lynchburg Road in front of the county office building, based on the development at the Almaral Business Campus findings were that this would be failing. So we have now secured funding for a roundabout to go in that location. It is in design. That is partially funded by the developer of Almaral Business Campus, partially by the county and partially by the state. So that is underway or in design right now, and we would expect that to be completed before the bulk of the Phase Two development comes online. Other existing issues that were identified include the Stagecoach Road-Fifth Street intersection right here as well as both the ramps for the I-64 interchange. Those all have failing movements in the future with or without the Phase Two construction. There's also a lack of consistent bike ped facilities throughout the entire corridor that we are looking for funding right now to try and address. As I mentioned, Southwood Phase Two would add approximately 4,433 trips to this already constrained network. When you add Phase One and Phase Two, that's around 8,000, just under 8,000 trips per day into this overall corridor, almost doubling the number out there. With the addition of the Phase Two traffic, we have some concerns with the operations at the Sunset Avenue-Old Lynchburg intersection, which will, for the movement for people leaving Sunset, trying to get on Old Lynchburg to head into the city or to the interchange, that would increase significantly the delay for that movement in both the AM and PM, especially in the PM where it goes from approximately 30-second delay to about a three-and-a-half-minute delay to get out of there. So recognize that that is an issue that we'd have to address. Also, the Stagecoach, Stagecoach Old Fifth or Fifth Street intersection, which, as I mentioned, has significant delays already. The addition of the Southwood Phase Two traffic would increase those delays, making this intersection very poor operations through both the peak hours. Southwood is proffering construction of two transit stops within their development, and those would include shelters and benches. We think that's a great improvement. It could reduce or offset some of the vehicular trips when people opt to use the transit instead of getting in private, personal vehicles. Phase Two would also add an additional approximately 400 trips to Hickory Street. Hickory Street's currently a private road, and the maintenance responsibilities are shared between the county, Southwood, and Covenant School, and it's in pretty poor condition right now. Southwood is also proffering to develop the 30% design plans to reconstruct Hickory Street to public standards so that we could then have VDOT take over the maintenance of that. I think that 30% design, that is a necessary first step so that we can move into looking for funding for construction if we wanted to move towards that. But I think that the completed improvements would be necessary prior to full buildout of Southwood because of that additional traffic we'd be sending on that poorly maintained road. So to move to construction, we expect that would require significant additional investment by the county to get that completed.
In the staff report, and one of the concerns that we had raised in the analysis was schools impacts. With 1,000 units, there's potentially 190 students total as far as projected yields. The current community has about 160 elementary students. And as we know, Mountain View does not have any additional capacity. They're operating with 12 mobile units to accommodate its current population. An expansion is planned to accommodate the current population and replace some of those mobile units. The analysis that was provided in terms of the projected student generation was included in the code of development, and the school staff has reviewed it. And we've talked to them after their initial comments, and we still think there will be impacts, or there will still be impacts to elementary school students. And this is around 90 to 100 students. Some of the difficulty with these projections is that we don't know with certainty right now how many of the existing Southwood residents will remain. There's a higher student generator associated with that than what you see in this table. And then also, we're not sure of the unit type as far as the breakdown if Phase Two is to be, when Phase Two moves forward. Schools is currently studying options for land acquisition for the new elementary school. That's their primary concern. This population also goes to Burley Middle School and Monticello High School, but they didn't identify any critical issues at this time. So they are studying the issue and have indicated that ideally a comprehensive school site would be 20 acres in size. And then identification of the site and construction is important prior to any additional growth in the Mountain View boundaries. There was the proffer that was provided by Southwood that offers the 5.7-acre school site. And should the county purchase the lot, the county would assume responsibility for relocating residents in Block Four if the owner has not yet begun redevelopment. And then it was offered at a 20% reduction to fair market value. The Mountain View, future Mountain View or new elementary school is not currently funded in the budget, but it is recommended within the next five years. In terms of affordable housing, again, there's 227 either for sale or for rent units that are being offered in the code of development. Depending on buildout, that could be 47% of the total number of units or 23%, and those would be at 80% AMI. Or if sold to current residents of Southwood, there is an additional cap. There's also the reservation in Block 25 for an additional 60 low-income housing tax credits. I mentioned that there is no action plan or performance agreement in place for Phase Two that the board has approved. So we talk about zoning running with the land a lot, so the zoning runs with the property. We understand the current applicant is Habitat and has higher levels of commitment to their residence, but those are not in place in the code of development or the application or proffers. I wanted to acknowledge and thank everyone that had sent in all of the emails that the Planning Commission has received prior to the board. We'll certainly package that up, and that'll be part of the record. And as the project moves forward, all of those emails of support and those concerns that have been raised, we provided the community meeting summary in the packet. Some of the support is obviously for the neighborhood, excuse me, the positive impact this will have on the Southwood community and also the resident-driven planning process. The other, some of the concerns that we've seen are mirroring some of the staff concerns in terms of traffic and schools impacts. There are many positive aspects to this project at this time. You know, the recommendation is not for approval. We've cited some, many of the positive aspects of the project. We also have concerns, as we've mentioned, with regard to schools and traffic. And also the commitment to the neighborhood center. Now, this item, as I mentioned, has gone through a little quicker than our typical review time that you would see for this type of rezoning. So in addition, we have some additional detailed comments we'll be providing to the applicant as this moves forward in terms of code of development corrections and things like that that we will provide to them. So that concludes my portion. Sorry, we took a little longer than we usually do. I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the applicant has had a chance to give their presentation.
Okay, questions for staff? Luis?
Just a couple of points of clarification. So the 227 is a fixed number, so when you give us the percentage of 47% to 23% of the max development, the 227 stays fixed, and what changes is the overall development, is that?
Yes.
The amount of units, but 227 doesn't change?
That's what's offered as far as the minimum number of affordable units that would be provided.
But in terms of your calculation of 47% to 23%?
That was based on the minimum of 527 that would be provided up to the 1,000 maximum.
Okay, 227 staying that's.
Right, yes, that's.
A constant, okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions?
Can we just, as a secondary sort of clarification, just extending on that? So the 60 that are referenced by the income, the housing income tax credits, is that included in the 227 or is that in addition?
That's in addition.
So it's 227, and if the piece comes through, if we can block 18 or something like that, then that would be in addition to that?
Yes.
And am I correct in what you said there, and not what you said, but what's proffered there is that if it doesn't happen by some X amount of time, it goes away and they can do whatever they want to do in that block?
Yes.
Okay, so it's 60 in addition.
Okay, question?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. That was great. Really appreciated it. Also really appreciated a little bit of background on Phase One. So obviously I'm doing a fair amount of catch up on that as I wasn't part of the original phase. I just had a couple of quick questions. One is on the performance agreement that was part of, I think, Phase One. Has staff looked at, I think we had one slide and had two green boxes. I remember that on there. I assume you all have looked at the the work that's been done to date against the amount of investment the county's made. Have you made any determinations on your feelings about that in general? Is that been successful or?
Well, you know, Stacy and others have been more involved with the performance agreement. Like I said, they have met certain milestones that we acknowledge. I can go back to that slide if you want, and then their remaining milestones.
That's okay.
That will be met. But I guess I'm not if you're asking for a general statement as far as how satisfied we are with how Phase One is going. I guess I don't, you know, I haven't been involved if you're asking specifically about the performance agreement.
Okay, that's great.
We could have Stacy up now to address that. We don't have to wait.
While she's coming up, Mr. Mitchell, I would say that the land, this is really a land use application rather than a evaluation of the performance agreement. So any sort of their performance under the performance agreement ought to be considered separately from the land use applications before the commission tonight.
Got it. Okay, fair enough. Thanks. If that's if this is not a good question, then
It's still okay to ask the question.
Okay.
Just not whether it was successful on this side of the dice.
Got it.
But go ahead.
Good evening, Stacy Petia, Housing Policy Manager. A lot of the milestones in the performance agreement really focused on making sure Habitat secured funding for the units that were promised. One of the milestones was being able to secure a partner to develop low income housing tax credits, which they did. And and so the two milestones that are left really have to do, one has to do with funding, which they have secured. We're just waiting for documentation that we can have for our records. And the other one doesn't kick in until I believe they have a significant number of the affordable housing building permits issued, and I don't remember what that is. So we feel at this stage, they've done a great job and they're working their way through the performance agreement in a satisfactory manner.
Great, thank you. That's helpful.
Thanks.
One other specifically land use related question, I think. So thinking about the current zoning is R1, right, or sorry, R2. And thinking about this request, had there been improvements that had been planned that would have been necessary other than the transportation improvements to handle density that would have been there by right?
No, I don't. I don't think that there's anything else as far as improvements in that area because it is zoned R2s, one of our low density. It's a nonconforming mobile home community that has more units than the underlying zoning would typically allow.
Got it. Okay, thanks. That's all I have.
Just have a couple of questions. So sorry, don't go too fast.
I told you, the first time back in the auditorium, I'm not just sitting at the screen anymore.
This was just for my clarification because I'm still grappling with the school piece a little bit. And so make sure I have it right. So 190 students are projected with 1,000 units. And there's currently 160 students in the Southwood. And with the plan to not displace anyone is that that commitment. Can you help us just give a range of like that net?
Yeah.
That's there. And I know there's a lot of moving factors, like some people will decide not to stay and some will move in. I understand there's a lot of moving pieces, but could you help me with like just a range of the net that might impact the schools? Based off of those numbers?
Well, we focused on the elementary school.
Okay.
You know, we've got the, we've got a number of questions from commissioners and, you know, we've presented on what we have at this time. Given the review, we have some remaining questions about schools and but we do, it is difficult to come up with that range based on the variables in terms of the number of units. When we looked at it a couple of different ways, it still has a significant impact on the elementary school. And it was like 80 or 90 units. We don't have any of those numbers for you for this evening because they're not. You know, we could, we don't, we have what's available in the code of development and what we've reviewed and been submitted so far. We don't.
All right, no, thank you. That's been a little tough for me to grapple with. And then the second question is more transportation related. And I guess the question is, how many of those projects, like you had those little circles in that slide? So like, how many of those projects would you expect to be funded by like Smart Scale, which I understand cradle to grave is like a 10 year process, cradle to grave versus like other streams of revenue like profers or, you know, capital improvement, funding this? Could you walk me through that a little bit?
Sure. As I, as I mentioned, the the intersection at Old Lynchburg and Fifth Street in front of the office building, that was funded just in the last round of Smart Scale, so just two years ago. And we did get approval to accelerate that and accelerate to a kind of incongruous term there because it will still be probably about three years before we see construction on that one. The other project that we are looking to move forward on right now is the is a shared use path along the entire Old Lynchburg, Old Lynchburg Fifth Street corridor, south of the interstate. And that we are looking to fund through Smart Scale right now. So that would probably, we wouldn't even know until a year from now whether that got funded or not. And then you're you're talking at least another three to four years at a minimum to get that constructed. And then we do have some other sidebar projects in the area. I think that all of these projects, we're going to need some some state funding for because they are all pretty significant projects, the intersections and the interchange ramps and Hickory Street. Those could be through Smart Scale or revenue sharing. They could be partially locally funded. If developments come and offer proffers, that can also offset some of those costs. But those would all be well into the future because we have not even started making applications for those yet.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay, and just for the benefit of the audience, Smart Scale is a competitive transportation grant program. And by cradle to grave, you meant start to finish. Just try to be careful with our planning jargon. So other questions? Daniel, did you have any?
Can I ask Kevin a question? So Kevin, can you look for a bit? So I understand what we're talking about coming out onto Old Lynchburg Road. So we're going to push, let's say, whatever, it's like 1,300 households out that way. But they also have the ability to go out, I guess it's the east way. And by kept Covenant School, so what's it going to take to be able to handle 1,000, that's 1,000 here, and how much was it in the first one? 300 and some less, so we're looking at basically an increase of 1,300?
Yeah, so we think Phase Two would generate, we estimated about 10% of the Phase Two traffic would exit Hickory Street going towards Covenant and then through to Stagecoach. So that would be about 400 trips from Phase Two.
From Phase Two.
And then Phase One, that was, you know, that that's going to be about 300 trips, assuming those same percentages because they had about 3,000 something trips. So, so yeah, we're looking at it, Southwood in general, putting about 1,000 trips a day on Hickory Street. Going through Covenant, yes.
Which is really basically still a residential community is I mean, it's really, it's not like coming up, coming out onto Old Lynchburg Road.
It is, and I think we noted that in the staff report that those are stop control intersections over there in that neighborhood. And there are concerns noted that there's probably going to be a lot of delay at a lot of those stop signs that are more in that neighborhood focused and would impact all of those people that live down there plus the Covenant School. And we would, the the road is in some some level of disrepair right now. So we we definitely would like to get that fixed. We are also proposing, the Biscuit Run Park has a proposed trailhead on that road. That could generate more trips. This is Hickory Street, something that we want to take care of with or without Phase Two. But the Phase Two would kind of put a little bit more pressure on us to get that taken care of. And the county does have some responsibility for that, just to clarify that we have a maintenance responsibility on that.
Sorry, just one last question for Ms. Raxdale. The number five factor unfavorable, just to clarify, where it says the rezoning does not provide a commitment to a minimum square footage. That's, that's the specific concern, right, is that there is not a minimum stated, not that there isn't a center, but that there isn't a minimum.
Yes, that was, excuse me, they, without a minimum, there's no assurances that, you know, some of the recommendations in the plan, the master plan could be met with for providing that center with nonresidential uses. There aren't any nonresidential uses that have been approved on the site plans for Phase One to date, so.
Thanks. And is there a like a general rule of thumb or a standard for a minimum square footage that you would expect to see?
Well, it's a neighborhood service center. I think there's no maximum in the master plan. I'd have to look up what we typically recommend for neighborhood service centers, but I think five or 10,000 at least.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
If I could follow on just the same question, similar question. So it said in the report that they originally in Phase One, they were going to build, I think it was 50,000 square foot of commercial, but it noted that they're now for Phase One possibly only doing 10. So we're getting 40,000 square feet less of commercial in Phase One. And in Phase Two, without a maximum, where you're saying we could get zero up to 60,000.
I can't speak for, well, yeah, it's up to 60,000 for Phase Two. It could be between 0 and 60,000 and the other phase, it could have been between 0 and 50,000, so.
Right, but I think it was the applicant in their their report said that they were probably only going to be doing 10 in Phase One, so.
That's what they indicated. Like I said, there haven't been any site plans that come that have come through that have any commercial at all. To date, it's only been residential.
Okay.
They might be planning ahead for it in the future, and I asked about that with blocks 11 and 12, but there isn't anything. And blocks 11 and 12 are right at the corner of Hickory and Old Lynchburg, where the apartments are planned, but we haven't, we haven't approved any nonresidential on any of the site plans to date.
Right, so so the concern could be, a concern could be that there are less commercial there is than the more residential there is, which means potentially more units and more impacts.
Well, we haven't stated that, but we analyzed the residential and the number of units based on the residential range. You know, I guess, you know, more commercial, there might be less residential, but they have a great deal of flexibility in their code of development and we, in terms of how the blocks play out.
Okay, well, when the applicant comes up, maybe they can talk to
Yes.
What they, what they're thinking and what they're hoping for. Okay. Other questions for staff at this point? Okay, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, we'd like to hear from the applicant. And just as, as you know, as a veteran, please state your name and company for the record.
I'm gonna not open my mouth until I get our presentation.
We won't start timing you until it comes up.
Thank you.
Rebecca, can someone come and exit us out of the staff report? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Lori Schweller, attorney with Williams Mullen, representing Southwood Charlottesville LLC, a Habitat entity. I'd like to introduce our primary speaker, Dan Rosenzweig, who's the CEO of Greater Charlottesville Habitat for Humanity. I'd also like to introduce some of the members of our team who may be speaking to you tonight. We have Andrew Benisky, who is the Chief Construction Officer for Habitat. We have Valerie Long, who is my colleague at Williams Mullen. Megan Nadostip, who is a certified planner also at Williams Mullen. Steve Schmidt, who is a transportation engineer at Timmins Group. And Craig Katarsky at Timmins Group. So we would like to start by thanking the county for all of the funding that's provided thus far for Phase One. Thank you for the staff resources, the devotion of time and staff to Phase One. And we'd like to particularly thank the Planning Commission. Three years ago, you took a leap of faith in approving and recommending approval for a form based code based on a block plan. And I think that your faith was warranted. Let me turn it over to Dan for a few comments on that.
Thank you, Lori, and thank you, members of the commission, for inviting us to participate tonight. I'm Dan Rosenzweig, President and CEO of Habitat for Humanitarian of Charlottesville. I want to make sure I know which button is this thing forward. Okay, so as Lori said, you took a leap of faith a few years ago and you proved, you approved a block plan that created a form based code that created general formal regulations that allow the residents to be in command of the neighborhoods that they designed. And they knocked it out of the park. This is Village One. It has everything in it that you would want a professional planner to have. It's got a consolidated open space in the middle for folks to gather. It's got pocket parks throughout. There's a mixture of affordable and market rate units on every block. It's all connected to trails. And they took advantage of some of the flexibility in the code to make some incredibly wonderful moments. So for example, as you drive into or drive or walk into Village One, first thing you notice are homes taking advantage of the ability to front homes on the green. So rather than private yards, it's a pocket park for people to gather together. There were also some concerns about the minimum proffer of affordable housing. As you'll recall, we proffered 50 affordable homes and we're building 211. We're hopeful that we can build as much as we possibly can in Village Two as well, but it was 63% rather than 15% affordable in Phase One. That brings us to Phase Two. And I won't go over this in too much detail because Rebecca did a wonderful job describing this. But this is really an extension of the code of development and the regulating block forms that were part of the first phase. That will allow critically the next cohorts of residents as they're ready to come together as a group and design it village by village. We're now in the sort of rinse repeat mode where we know what we're doing. So we've done the first two villages that have now knitted themselves together. The third group of Village Three planners are now working in Phase Two, I'm sorry, Phase Two. And what we plan to do is work that way throughout the process. We talked about, Rebecca talked about green space. There's flexibility within this so the residents can actually plan the green space in their own internal developments. Couple of things that are fixed items on this is a big central park located in Block 28, the trail connections and two miles of eight foot wide trail looping through the, looping through the neighborhood. It's not just residential and we will have a conversation later about the commercial. We agree with the staff recommendation, but we are working right now with partners in Northern, from Northern Virginia, La Cocina VA, that specializes in commercial kitchens, shared commercial kitchens rented at a very low fee, business incubation, especially with Latino communities. And so we see the new downtown Charlottesville as being this, this, this hub of business incubation and and activity. In terms of affordable housing, when you add what we built or building in Phase One with what the minimum that we've proffered in Phase Two, you get the 438 units total. That is an absolute minimum. The reason we proffered 227 because you add that together with what we're building Habitat ourselves in Phase One. And that says at least one to one replacements, what's there, we wanted to make sure that we are on the hook to at least do that. We're going to build more and we're looking for light tech partners to up that number. Ideally, we'd love to get up above 50% to probably something closer to 60%. Some people have asked, well, aren't there already, isn't there already affordable housing there? Well, not by your own standards, not by the standards of the county housing policy, which describes the conditions that homes have to be in to be considered affordable, decent affordable homes. This is a trailer that we purchased back a month or so ago from a gentleman who sadly lost his wife to cancer. We purchased, he went and moved in with his, with his, with his children. And this is the condition that he was living in when we purchased this. We're going to rehab this trailer for temporary housing for a new family, but we don't really believe that the trailer is there, although some of the families, most of the families keep them in beautiful shape. They work really hard, but we don't believe that they meet the definition of affordable housing per your own definitions. But this is not just about affordable housing. This is about meeting lock, stock and barrel, your first objective in your new housing policy. And that's to create, if you can boil it all down, it's to create all kinds of housing for all kinds of people in all kinds of places. And I think we're hitting a home run here. I don't think there's any community like this in the United States of America. We are committed to every single family who's there, giving them multiple choices. If you don't make any money, we're going to subsidize your rent. we're going to subsidize your rent all the way down to nothing. If you want to purchase a home, we're going to find a product that works for you. If you want to rent a home, you're going to be able to rent it no more than 30% of your income. And we will work all the way from zero to 100% AMI. Our partners, PHA, are building rental units for folks between 30 and 80, and then the market will take care of the rest. This will truly be a complete housing ladder of opportunity, unlike anything else in the nation. And it will be a mixture of housing types. These are the housing types just in Village One alone. But not all affordable housing is equal. You've heard developers talk about how hard it is to get from 80% to 60% of our median income. This is the demographic breakdown of the residents of Southwood, and you can see most people are clustered around 30% or below. Our subsidies, we subsidize things at a lot greater rate than most of what's considered affordable housing. We have to. But we're also cleaning up the site. Uh, what we've gotten into in the supposed greenfields adjacent to where, uh, where the, the site is, is the, is the, we have found the, um, it makes me really sad to talk about this, but we have found the, really the results of 60 years of environmental injustice and neglect. We've already spent $2 million cleaning up failing septic fields, uh, cleaning out unsuitable soils, uh, fixing, changing out an asbestos water line, taking up underground sewage tanks. The good news is, is that we have a handle on this now. The area where we're developing now is absolutely 100% pristine under the watchful eye of DEQ, and we know what we're doing going forward, but that's added a lot of pressure to the, to the pro forma. But we have solutions here, but we need the rezoning to move forward because we can't access these solutions until we move forward. We have designed and upgraded Hickory Street, and we've designed a new sewer line, um, to replace the remainder of the failing septic at Southwood. Financially, this is a, this is a challenging project, and I know some people have concerns about our ability to pull it off. Here's a, in, in rough terms, the pro forma, this is just land. This is not land and housing. This is just land. It's about $161 million project. There are some things in here that most performers don't have in it, like resident engagement and trailer acquisition and moving. And what you notice on the revenue side is that market rate lot sales, $81 million are about 60% of total revenues for this. And so people wonder about why mixed income. In addition to creating a place for everybody, it also cross subsidizes the affordable stuff. So if we lose market rate lot sales, that deficit only grows. But the other thing to look at is Habitat affordable lot sales with the price of construction, with the depth of the subsidy that we provide. We, we, there's no money in there in the pro forma for, on the land side for market rate, uh, for affordable lot sales. The good news is, and this is where there's an extreme, extreme sense of urgency, is there's $2.9 trillion of federal funding out there right now for projects just like this specifically designed, uh, specifically designed for, um, uh, for upgrading infrastructure in the hardest hit communities. But that money is being spent and allocated and pulled down in Chesterfield County, New Mexico, and Alaska. And we cannot access it until rezoning happens. So we really appreciate the staff moving this forward. We know it was a little bit of a rush, and we know that there's some things that we still need to work on, but we need this to go forward. Otherwise, that, otherwise we can't close that funding gap. We are providing 274 homes above the minimum. 274 marker eight lots times the average of 150,000, which is the going rate for a lot these days, is about $41 million of income that we're not generating because we're going above the minimum. You add that to the pro forma, and all of a sudden that deficit turns into a $20 million surplus that we could otherwise then use for some off-site proffers. But this doesn't necessarily support that while we build $140 million worth of affordable housing. So in some summary, oops.
That's okay. Go ahead.
I'm just about done, I promise. Um, this is a project that's been designed by the residents. It cleans up an environmental catastrophe. It remediates onsite and offsite environmental hazards. It creates a set, a center for business incubation, early childhood education, commercial use. We've proffered a school site, and we know this proffer isn't perfect, and we, we do believe that we can work, work with staff and the board of supervisors as it goes forward. We've provided a, a host of multimodal transportation improvements so that we're not so car-centric as we're solving traffic issues in this area of the county. But most importantly, it's urgent. There's, there's, there's $2.9 trillion of money out there. We have 39 families working towards homeownership right now. We have families living in unsafe conditions. We have to move forward. So I would very much, uh, welcome any questions and would really, really love it if tonight we can move this forward towards the board of supervisors. Thank you very much. And thanks for the extra time.
Thank you. All right. Do we have questions for the applicant? Go ahead, Liz.
Thank you very much. That was, uh, very thorough, but I do have a couple of questions. I'll start with where you left off in terms of the, the 2.2.1 trillion, is what you said?
Nine.
2.9? Yeah. And I think 1 trillion of that was earmarked for infrastructure in the ARPA grants. So have you, have you looked at what specifically would you target in terms of those infrastructure improvements? And that, do you have a priority list and things that you feel that, you know, you, you would, you would want to utilize that ARPA grant for?
We do. Thank you for the question. Absolutely. The, the two biggest projects, the, the single biggest project and the very first thing we do right now is to decommission all the remaining septic, uh, fields in Southwood, and we can do that as soon as rezoning happens. We have worked with the county to prepare an application for ARPA funding. And, uh, what we've sort of found is that there does, seems to be a disinclination to move forward until such time as the rezoning is done. The infrastructure bill is a different bill. That's, that's one 1 million. ARPA was 1.9. This was 1 million. And that is, there are a number of different initiatives. We're going through the, the writing, the, many of the final rules right now, but we're, we're going through the list. And there are a number of different projects that could fund the sewage cleanup. It could fund, um, uh, removal of the oil tanks. It could fund upgrade of Hickory, uh, right now. And so those are sort of the three big projects that, um, that we think would be first in the queue. Does that, does that help?
It, it does. And, and particularly with some, in the sewage and getting, getting that, that remediated, obviously, is, it's a key and should be the highest priority, but the, uh, the circulation and vehicular, I think, is, is up there as well. So I appreciate you mentioning that. The, the other piece that I haven't seen anywhere is, is a comprehensive timeline. You know, where, you know, where are you with, with phase one? I know there, there's been some changes in that since we saw it. Forget how long it was now, almost two years ago. And then what you're seeing, the beginning of phase two, and how long would that take? So kind of a, is there something that we can get or you can walk us through what, what you're, I mean, you can.
Do we have any other slide, the timeline slides? I can talk you through it.
Yeah, if you don't mind talking through it. If we can get it at some point, just, just so we can see a, a, a timeline of, of your project, what you're.
Right. So it's, so as you saw up on the screen and what you see behind you right now, um, Village One, uh, site work is all but complete. There's a little bit of left to go. Uh, we started building there, and that's the first 49 Habitat homes, the first 80 homes total. Village Two is under site plan review, but as Rebecca said, it, it shouldn't come out right away. We have contractors ready to go. So we should be able to just continue building. The other parts of the village, which are, um, uh, the commercial center, uh, our, our partners, PHA, uh, that land is, is all but ready to go. We're waiting for them to do some final details to get themselves ready to move. So all of phase one should be complete within a couple of years. And the idea is that we roll then right into phase two, because there are families that are, that are sort of working already towards phase two. So we believe phase two, once you get through the county process, um, and then you have a site contract and you do the earthwork, we'd start building in 2025, and it's probably a 15-year build out, um, to complete the rest of Southwood. So 2025 to 2040 is the timeline for phase two. Could accelerate a little bit, most likely won't.
So, so two years, uh, in phase one, and you'll, obviously there'll be a progression of people moving in, right, to the earlier villages. But two years, entirety of phase one completed, and then you mobilize on phase two.
Correct. But it, it's worth noting that's the, the two, the two big infrastructure improvements that we noted, um, the sewer line and the, and Hickory upgrade can happen before, um, before redevelopment. That's for some of the other stuff. In fact, the sewer line was designed to serve the, the trailers temporarily, but then convert to a permanent sewer line later. But we've just been told that we can't move forward until it's rezoned.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, Dan. Thanks, uh, for a great presentation. So much information and the slides were going so quickly. I'm not sure I grasped everything, but let me just start by saying congratulations on a real, really a masterful job of community engagement. I mean, it's like none other that I've seen. It's really phenomenal. So congratulations on that. Um, just a couple of quick questions. So there's obviously an existing tenant base, uh, on the site. What, uh, programs do you have in place? What types of process will you take to ensure that those people are given priority, um, and are able to actually afford the homes that are being built?
So, um, so I geeked out a little bit and I actually, um, have a description of both the rental program and the homeownership program. Uh, would you all like, you know, hand that out so you can see that as a, or are you looking for something a little bit more high level?
Uh, I was thinking kind of high level, if that's possible, maybe a summary of that, but we could also.
Well, I can hand this out.
We can accept handouts on the guys. It's just that it's hard to digest them while listening, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the, the cliff notes are, is that the first 39 families homeowners are already moving through the program and selecting lots in the first phase. Um, and then there are about 14 renters who are sort of doing the same thing. And so the first phase, um, the first village is, is all but sold out, and people are starting to select lots in the second village. Our priority are, are, we are lots, our selection policy into the program prioritizes Southwood families, so they are first in line. If for some reason we build more than Southwood families want, then we would open it up to the general public, but not first and foremost, our commitment is to Southwood residents. We have created a program where there are 10 different house, uh, homeownership options. Um, and it's, this is a pilot program where typically in Habitat and a lot of affordable housing, you make what you make, you pay what you pay, and you get what you get. But this is a very different community. There are people who've made fundamental and really rational and smart choices about housing. So for example, there are people who underhouse themselves so they can grow a business, or they send money home to families so they can keep people alive and in, in their country of origin. And so we wanted to provide people an opportunity to actually buy down if they wish, so that they can still pay a smaller percentage of their income on housing, to have more for other things. And we didn't want to be patriarchal about that and paternalistic about that and force people to, to spend what, what underwriters say you can spend. At the same time, there's a high cash economy at Southwood as well. And so we're offering a one-to-one down payment match. So any dollar that anybody puts down that they may have stashed or in a rainy day fund, they can put down and they get an X, they get $2 off of their, uh, off of the price of their home. So we've created prices at all price points, including entry-level homeownership, where the total housing payments aren't more than what they're paying now for their, for their trailers. Now, that's a little bit complicated because they have a number of different payments. There's, there's rent payment on the pads, some pay rent on the trailers, some pay a mortgage on the trailers, but a lot of it is eaten up in utilities. Some utility costs are 300, 400 a month. Our tel, our homeownership program starts at $500 a month for every single housing expense. So the, the, um, from your first mortgage to your, uh, utilities to everything else, and then it goes up from there. Our rental products, we, we offer, I think, four different rental products. And there's a fair market value. If people pay something like fair market value, they kind of get to choose whatever they want. If not, they're a little bit more kind of constrained by what's, by what's available and what they fit into. But we have off, we will subsidize that, so we will do an underwrite on every, on every family. And if they don't have, they, they pay no more than 30% of their income. So if their income is nothing, they, they pay nothing. We have a, we have a solid commitment with choice in it. And is it flawless? I don't know. We're piloting it, but we, we're doing the best we can. We've worked really hard with residents for years to try to make it possible.
Great. Thank you. Um, quick question about schools, the school site. So obviously staff raised concerns about that. Um, you all have proffered to discount the market rate by 20%. There's also a sundown clause in there, if I read it correctly. So after a year, basically, or a year from the date of the approval of the rezoning, that would go away. Can you tell, tell us a little bit why that sundown clause is in there? And there's flexibility?
Yeah, we were, we were trying to put this proffer together in a way that, that gave the county space to sort of make up its, its mind. So some folk are, what we gather is that some folks want a 20-acre school site, which really isn't feasible, feasible land use here. Some folks are open to the idea of an urban scale site. Not everybody has decided that this is the place they want to school. We are, we are open to a school. We would love to have a school there, an urban scale school as is called for in your comprehensive plan. But we wanted to give the county some time to make the decision about that. If, in reading the staff report, it seems to me that the staff is feeling a little bit maybe, maybe rushed or pushed and that the process, we are happy to extend that. That deadline, if, if that was something that's, um, that feels valuable to the commission.
That's the reason for the year, basically, to give the county time to think through this. Yeah. But somewhat of an arbitrary time. Yes. Okay. Um, last question. How do you, um, what are your thoughts on the, the concern that the county has, the staff has regarding establishing a minimum square footage for the center?
We, we applaud them. Uh, we, we just missed that. We, um, we absolutely, uh, planned to do it. Uh, Commissioner Firehawk asked, you know, talked about what was anticipated in the first phase and what's happened, and maybe this is a good time to address that. But, um, our intent was to build between 10 and probably more 20 or so, um, uh, square feet of commercial in the first village. What we did do was proffer a form-based code that had 12-foot first floors in that neighborhood special, that neighborhood res, that, that special area. And that extends into the code of development. So even if at the initial iteration, they're not commercial, over the lifetime of that building, that space can, can become flexibly commercial. I can tell you, we, we were working, we were trying to work with the local food hub to develop a, um, uh, a commercial kitchen, food pantry, a, a bunch of different things. Then COVID hit and the investors left. Right now, uh, it's PHA's building, uh, they're planning a community center. They're hoping to have a couple of classrooms of early childhood education and some stuff that sort of feeds the, that, that building. So it's not, there's a civic space, but it's not going to be sort of the hub. We see the, we see the, 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 the more active uses in that second phase right downhill from there. But we're, we're willing to, um, tonight to go on record, and, and if you want to make it a condition, or we can proffer it, uh, a minimum square footage.
Thank you.
The others from the side.
But just following up on that.
Yeah, they're okay.
Following up on that, so that's a minimum, that's, that's what I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, that you'd be willing now to say about phase two, what about phase one? Because phase one still feels like, well, let me back up. So when you first came to us, one of my concerns was that this was going to turn into nothing but residential area. We had this long discussion about the Russell, about that, that. I see that happening right now in phase one, because I don't see, I don't see a commercial center. So that's, that's a big sort of, mm, I'm, I'm having a hard time with that. And now perhaps staff found it, perhaps staff didn't find it. But now you're saying that you're willing to do something in phase two and go on the record and say, we're going to do something in phase two. Perhaps that happens, perhaps I'll feel better about that. But my, my main thrust on this is that it still feels like what it's going to be is this, this big commercial over 1,000 houses over there. And so there's a couple of things that I want, I, I'd like some clarity on. How many students are going to be in, are, are anticipated in the phase one? So if you're telling me right now that there's 120 sort of K through five in, in, that currently are there, 160 K through five that are there now. And if there's a, let's say another, just forget the 190, but 95 that are going to be there in the elementary school, how many are, how many do you anticipate in phase one?
Uh, according to the county's calculator, it would be 48 in phase one, using, using the same metrics.
Forty, so 200.
Forty-eight in phase one.
It looks like about 200, uh, yeah, uh, about 200 new students, K through 12, between current, oh no.
That, that's the total, the total for, for the entirety of Southwood, not deducting students who might already be going.
So from what, from what I understood from staff is that there's 160 K through 12 right now coming out of, out of the community. Am I wrong? Did I miscalculate that?
I think that's what I heard as well.
Okay. So 160 and then 48 using the county's, using the county's calculations for phase one. And then 95 using the county's calculations for phase two. Am I close?
Well, it, it, it's a little bit tricky.
You tell me, you tell me what I should.
Yes, we're really trying.
Tell me the number, tell me the number that I should use.
You cannot get a definitive number for phase one, phase two, and the net number of students who are currently going to school from Southwood equals what?
Yeah, that's all I want.
Well, there's a slide for that. Let's see.
We used, uh, the calculators provided by the.
We used the calculators provided by the schools, which are specific to the school district and specific to housing types. And so using those specific calculators, we found a hundred and ninety students if we built out the maximum one thousand units in phase two. I went ahead and did that same analysis for phase one, just to see what that number would be. So that's two forty three. Right now, out of Southwood, we have three hundred and ninety one total students, not just elementary students. So if if, you know, based on the numbers that I'm looking at, I'm seeing over the course of the build out of phase two, I'm actually seeing a net reduction in students. And part of the reason why that could be explainable is that Habitat homes have a lot of restrictions and encumbrances that mean Habitat homeowners stay in their homes a lot longer than non-Habitat homeowners. They have incentives to do so. And and so those students age out of elementary school and into the schools that are not currently overpopulated.
Did we get to a total?
No, we didn't, but that's okay. I think I'm I'm good. I'm not good on not getting to the total, because I was really just trying to look at what's the impact of the Mountain View School. And I don't see how we get a net to that, which my question is going to be. So and and this you can either, either one of can answer. So I don't see a concrete solution on how how this brilliant communities. I want to be real clear with this audience. I have nothing against this community. What I have, what I'm trying to figure out is that every student should have a place where he or she can be comfortable at school. And I would expect, given that the majority of the housing here is actually market rate, it's not affordable housing, that I would expect that this community would want this, that Southwood, the emerging Southwood community would want to be a active contributor to making sure that at least at the elementary school level, that those children have all of the possibilities that they can have. And so a five acre, which is a reasonable amount of space, because you look, it could be a little bit if we're going to have an urban school, five acre for this amount of time, for this amount of money, that doesn't feel as if it's a a a an a, an active way or an engaged way of coming to a solution. It sounds like it's sort of like we can do this. And so I'm looking for, since we heard something about, well, perhaps we can have community space. I think I'm looking to hear that, well, perhaps we can actually think about a more robust way of having schools. Because right now it doesn't feel robust to me. It feels still very cautionary and very sort of tentative. And there's just too many people that have a tendency to solution for schools.
Well, i- it's true that, like with all housing, new new residents do use roads and schools. There there's no doubt about that. But, you know, to to state the obvious, Habitat does the work that it does for no profit. And we we could give millions more in proffers, as as Dan showed you with the spreadsheet. We could do that, but it would be at the expense of the affordable housing that you're just not going to get anywhere else. So, you know, we're what we're addressing in terms of schools is a twenty percent discount on the price of that school site that is needed to acknowledge the twenty percent of those students who may be coming from Southwood. We are doing what we can, but 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 respectfully, i- it's your policy decision to determine whether you think you want that school or you want this affordable housing, this robust amount of affordable housing that unfortunately a market rate developer just wouldn't be able to provide.
I will, I will, I will say that we we will sort of stipulate that this is not purely an affordable housing community. So we should sort of be truthful in the fact that there is a large and 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 will be well developed community of market rate houses there. So this is a blended community. And in that blended community, so if this was simply a replacement of 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 the three hundred families that were there, three hundred some odd families that were in in Southwood, I got, I understand that. But this is not that any longer. This is a very different community that's got both both, I assume by some of the numbers I've seen here, higher end, higher end houses and not so higher end houses. And I still think that there should be. I would feel as if, as you said, from a policy standpoint, I guess I would feel as if there was a a meeting somewhere in the middle of it was a little bit more robust. But that's nothing, that's not my, that's not my only piece on this. The other piece that I have on this that I continue to struggle with is that it's one thing to have the three households, a three hundred households sort of coming out and joining stage codes from the east side. And that whatever past covenant school, whatever's happened there has happened. And the road is not a good road. I can attest to that, having driven it a couple of times. It's another thing that to push up a nine hundred more people through that and and only say, all we're going to give is thirty percent towards the design. That again, is something that if I were looking for something a robust sort of trying to engage in this whole process, I'd say, we're going to do this and we're also going to open ourselves to that. I I just have this, I get this sense that, for me at least, that the things which are being offered are are nice, nice in there and nice that you're offering them. But the totality of what's being offered is not is not really going to go towards the solution very much, is not going to help to create the solution. So that's part of what's here, that's what I'm wrestling with. And I'm listing for, as I answer other people to see what they, what, how that comes through.
Commissioner Bivens, may I respond to to just a couple of those things? First of all, a- as you all know, we already have residents in Southwood, many of whom are here tonight. So so that number that we're talking about, you need to think about how a good number of those people are already there. So, you know, keep keep that in mind as well. But sometimes Habitat works ahead of its promises. And in this case, it's it's going to do a hundred percent of the engineering of that road. And as you can see, you can't see, let me show you this. This slide. I can.
That's new, that's new news, counselor.
That's new news. So 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 this is a slide that quantifies some of the benefits from the proffers along with the affordable housing. I think it's a very important slide that you didn't get a chance to look at. And and it it, what we wanted to point out was that we're doing a hundred percent of the engineering for Hickory Street. And that's not just on Habitat's property, that is off site. So that's the whole of Hickory Street. That's a three hundred and twenty five thousand dollar. If, you know, if you add up all of these things that Southwood is doing as a developer, a hundred and fifty two million, six hundred and five thousand, that that's a lot being offered in addition to the intangibles that Dan went over with you. So again, you know, we could, we could even do more, but you see that number, four hundred and thirty eight minimum affordable housing units. It it's it's got quite a price tag and and we feel like that's the most important bullet point on this slide.
Okay, if I, I'm just going to ask two quick questions, real quick. This is just a terminology question, and I feel like I asked you this last time. You said in the report that three hundred and seventeen existing Southwood units have a G I N. That is a some kind of like, what is that, an intent to?
It's a.
Buy or stay, or what is that?
It's a general information notice that's required under the Uniform Relocation Act. So there was a certain period of time, July two thousand and nineteen, when Habitat had to say to our current residents, now is the time when we're, you know, you are here, you're guaranteed.
I got you, okay.
A place, yeah. We try to give a place to everyone at Southwood, absolutely. But but that's, that's the fixed number under the Uniform Relocation.
So the three hundred and seventeen is the number of folks that you must replace housing for in in whatever that formula, your many formulas. And then there are other people who've come since then that you're saying you're also pledging to provide housing for.
That's right.
So they didn't have to be there in two thousand and nineteen in order to follow to that.
Like everything is a little more complex than it seems. So we have to go back a few more years before that, actually. In two thousand and thirteen, we did a three part survey with everybody in the park to find out who was there and ask them if they wanted to stay and whether they wanted to be a renter or homeowner, et cetera, so that we could begin the planning process. We anticipated at that time that the planning would move a little faster than it did. So after about five years, we kind of looked in the mirror and said, hey, there are a lot of new people in the neighborhood. So let's, let's open up the door. At that point, we made, in two thousand and thirteen, we made promises to everybody who was there and told everybody else who came in after that, that you can stay because there's not a lot of affordable housing in the area, but but you're probably going to have to move. In two thousand and eighteen, we opened up the door again, because because those five years of families have become part of the community. So we did that again. And the 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 sort of the the mechanic, the the mechanism for that was the general information notice, which legally requires us to to do that. So we locked ourselves into that. There, at that point, it's even more complicated. At that point, that we were still a couple of years away from development. And so we looked in, we said, look, are we, can we, should we shut the door completely now? But given the dearth of affordable housing options in the area, we said, at least for a little while, we will let people in under a significant caveat amp door. So when they came in to register, we said, you will not be able to stay. This is temporary. And there's a handful of families, maybe fourteen or so families that moved in since then that have what's called a a move in notice that says this is under redevelopment and you can't stay. We're already helping those families, but there are some families we don't even actually know about. Sometimes families move in in the dead of night. So some of that, does that, does that help?
Yeah, that that was very helpful. And then this, this is probably one of those questions that sounds simple, but is also complicated. It is it, would it be a fair statement to say that all of the revenue that you you are generating by the sale of land, the sale of homes, I mean, you know, you're going to be selling things, properties within this, all of the one hundred percent of the revenue would go back into the Southwood site? Or would you be using some of these revenues for other Habitat for Humanity projects? Like, say you were going to do another trailer park somewhere. Are you rolling money over or is it all staying there?
One hundred percent of the land development stays at South, at Southwood. So anything, so if there's a lot sale at Southwood, that's right back into Southwood. But the, it's a little bit more complicated when when we originate a mortgage, we're the lender as well. So we originate a zero interest mortgage. We we build those mortgages up over time and then we either borrow against them so we can capitalize our next building. Moving forward from two thousand and twenty five on, we're going to be doing the majority of our building in Southwood, but we're also building elsewhere because there's a huge need regionally. So we build in Louisa and Green and Northern Albemarle and Croze and Charlottesville. And so that money that comes in through origination of those loans, that's that's core money. That that money never originated from Southwood to start with.
I got it.
And so that goes back into the pool that gets leveraged to provide capital to build the next home. So I can't guarantee that that money will stay in Southwood, but all of the land development money one hundred percent stays at Southwood.
Okay.
Dan, thank you for all the work that Habitat is doing. And I'm sure you're probably going all around the country presenting on this project here. I do believe that everyone deserves, every, everybody in this community deserves a safe and healthy home in a vibrant neighborhood. And you guys are working towards that. My one question was about, you know, feasibility studies. And was one performed on that environmental, on the environmental aspects that since you uncovered so much? Could you talk a little bit about that feasibility study and how does that relate to like the timing of this project?
Yeah, we did a number of feasibility studies and we went above and beyond what a typical developer would do in terms of our environmental surveys and environmental reviews, because you have to to pull down some of the public funding. We had jet geotechnical work, but it's impossible to predict what's under the ground until you actually start digging. And what we found broke our heart, to be honest with you. And thank God, we were the ones who bought the park. Because if anyone else had found what we found, they would have run away. What we found was that previous owners of the park had jury rigged multiple trailers to single septic tanks. So we found as many as ten hooked up to a single septic tank. So when someone flushed their toilet, that the tank has been full. We have been pumping and hauling for twelve years. Typically, a sewage tank should be pumped. I don't know, depends on the amount of use every couple of years or something like that. Some of our tanks, we've been pumping and hauling three times a week. That's a, that's a cost of about fifty thousand dollars a month that we've been, that we've absorbed for about twelve years now. And it's only gotten worse. And so we expected to find some of the stuff under the ground. We didn't expect nearly the amount of leaching that we found. Good news is, is that we actually have started removing some of the oil tanks. Every single original trailer had an oil tank and we were worried that they would all have leaked. So far, the none of them, none of, none of the tanks, they've all come up clean afterwards. That's, that's the good news. The bad news is, is that our, you know, our, you know, originally our perform a balance, as did our grading plan. But we've had to remove about fifteen thousand cubic yards of of organic topsoil, organic, I'd say, as in kind of a, you know, you know what I mean by by organic? And so we've had to remove that. And so there are a number of things that were unpredictable. But we had extensive, extensive environmental surveys done beforehand.
Thanks for the insight. And then it looks like there is a really high commitment, I tied up four hundred and thirty eight, I think, on the screen here, affordable housing units. And if I recall, there's maybe three hundred and forty one existing residents. So I was wondering if you could talk about that, that, oh, I'm going to say overcommitment, maybe for the sake of this question, overcommitment. And how does that impact the other proffers where the staff has said they found them maybe lacking, if you will? Could you talk a little about that balance and how you got to where you got?
Sure, thank you, thanks for the question. So there are three hundred and seventeen trailers, that three forty one was, there's been some attrition over the years. The trailers have caught fire, some people have moved their trailers, et cetera. So it's three seventeen right now. And so even if we build just the minimum of four, number of affordable units, it's a hundred and said a hundred and twenty one extra from what's there. I don't fundamentally believe that ethically we can look at a trailer that has a, has a half life of a certain number of years located on infrastructure that has failed and say that that's a safe, decent, affordable unit. So to, I don't think it's being not generous on my part to myself to say that it's only an addition of a hundred and twenty one units or so. Again, that four thirty eight is a minimum. That's what, that's, that's, that's our promise, but we're going to, we're going to try to do better. We did it in the first phase. We 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 knew we could do fifty. We did two hundred and eleven, and that's, that's what we're going to try to do again. Does, does that answer your question? I'm not, I'm not sure if it does.
It it does, and it's one more as a follow up, because it seems like some things are changing just a little bit. Could you walk us through each proffer that is before us? And maybe just talk a little bit about some of the decision making or the thoughts behind each one, like why you did what you did?
Absolutely. So with respect to the additional affordable units, we did a calculation based on what the land. If this were a typical development built out to its maximum of thirteen hundred units and the minimum proffer was met of fifteen percent, that would be a hundred and I can't remember, a hundred and seventy units or a hundred and sixty four units or something like that. So we're, we're actually well above the minimum number. And then we did a calculation based on how much we would sell a mark, if if we were to replace a market, an affordable lot at zero with a market rate lot at a hundred and fifty, what would be the revenue difference? And the revenue difference would be about forty one million dollars just on the land deal. And so that's kind of the, that's kind of the delta. So if you look at what we're sort of proffering towards affordable housing, it's forty one million for land subsidy and about a hundred million dollars of of buildings. So we have a hundred and forty million dollars that we're investing in affordable housing in this. And so that doesn't leave, and remember, we're renting homes to people who have no income. We're selling homes that may cost us two hundred thousand dollars to build in some cases for a first, first mortgage of fifty thousand dollars, because that's what they can afford. And so we we are, I I believe our proffer package is pretty generous. I understand Commissioner Bivens apprehensions, and I think we could probably work through some of that tonight or at least get some direction for that tonight. But 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 that's one thing that we can control is the amount of affordable housing. But that's the one variable we don't want to solve for, because that's not what we do. So we can walk through the proffers. We have a proper slide at the bottom. Yeah, so currently, the things that we've proffered are public trail connections to create connectivity between our two mile trail and Biscuit Run. If you remember, the infrastructure internal to Southwood is in the long range transportation plan. And it was intended to be, it was called the Gateway Project. And that was in recognition of the fact that Biscuit Run Park, at least that time, was planned with only a single entrance down Route twenty south. And so the crazy thing is, if you live in Mosby Mountain or Redfields and you can literally throw a stone into Biscuit Run, you can't get there without getting in your auto. you can't get there without getting in your automobile and driving through county roads and V dot roads to the park. And so um, we've public, we we intentionally built trails, we're proffering a basically a a parking ride. So you can, if you live in a western neighborhood, you can drive in there, park in the the parking ride, take your car, your bike off your car and get right into the park, or you can walk from Southwood, or you can walk from Red Fields, or you can walk from the neighborhoods around there. Uh, we've also offered, and I'm not sure that the county, that staffers want to accept this, but we've offered to make the um, a public easement or use access easement over the entire trail, so it be, uh, but still maintained by us. Uh, so that that we want those trails to be used by everybody. The multipurpose parking lot I talked about, and that could have a multiplicity of uses and and some things that serve the the community itself. There's a huge level of fairs and farmers markets and things like that. I think it could be used for that as well. We've um, proffered to transit stops at a a cost of fifty thousand dollars. And as Lori said, we originally proffered thirty percent of engineering, but we just figured, you know, we're already, we're already working with the engineers. As Kevin said, it's a it's a really, really critical piece that once you create that, um, that, once you diffuse traffic in that area of town, it takes pressure off the the primary. Now, it does put some pressure on neighborhood roads as well, but that's that's better transportation practice is to move traffic in different places rather than put it all funnel it all into one place. We have also proffered a school site, and this this proffer may need some work. We did our best to try to put something out there that that could be a win win, and it's it's a genuine proffer. And to the the the, uh, I do take a little issue with the idea that it's not robust because the twenty percent discount is equivalent to about one point eight million dollars. We think a site, we think this would work. We think this would be really good. Um, we recognize that the county has its own processes to go through, but we're willing to extend the timeline. Um, Commissioner Bivens talked about the size of it, and we're willing to make the contours of it more flexible. So when we get into design stage, it could grow a little bit if it needs to to accommodate the um, the program that the school wants, but it's really kind of a question of of timing here. And the Litech proffer, just like in the with the performance agreement, you can't, you can't actually proffer Litech because it's a competitive process. So you can't proffer that you're going to do it because you're not in control of that. But what we can do is take land offline and only offer it to Litech developers for a period of time. If they go through one or two cycles and don't get funded, it's never going to get funded. For some reason, there's a flaw in the proposal, and um, it's just not viable at that site. But as it happened in the first phase, uh, we worked with Piedmont Housing Alliance. They got it on their first go round, and now they're in the process of of building a hundred and twenty one units. Did I miss anything? What else did I miss?
Yeah. Go ahead. I just want to get to the public hearing.
Okay, all right. I just want to forget him. So um, so thank you for that. And then just two more questions and I get out of your way. Uh, so for a hundred percent design drawings, I just want to make sure that we're all kind of speaking the same language. So is that sealed by a professional engineer? It's gone through all the V that approvals and issued for construction, ready for issued for construction?
It's a question. Andrew, you probably need to come up here.
Evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Andrew Venesky. I'm the chief construction officer for Habitat. And I'm an Alamo County resident. And yes, a hundred percent design drawings will be completed by this fall by our civil engineer, Duberry, and that will be full engineered, signed and sealed drawings both through the county, ready to go to the county and V dot for approval.
All right. And well, so that doesn't include actually approval by V dot. I'm only asking because I know how that process can go and it can go back and forth for quite some time.
Yeah. So the reason we came up with thirty percent to start with, this was in conversations with Kevin, that in order to qualify for some of the federal infrastructure funding, you 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 thirty percent is the standard. You get to thirty percent. As we started going through this and realized how important this was, we saw the staff report, we saw how important this was to the county to upgrade that road. We went ahead and and uh, and uh, had our engineers continue to move. So we can change that proffer to a hundred percent. The other piece as well is that um, Kevin talked about the difficulty in finding money for that road. I got the pathway for getting money for that road. Infrastructure money is primarily geared towards so serving low income communities with improved infrastructure. So the segment of road from Hickory from our site to Oak that's off our site, if that's included in the entire application, it's serving primarily low income residents. So it's going to score higher on federal infrastructure. And we can, as part, again, tonight, assuming this moves forward, uh, we can, whatever, we can, we can provide that on the record commitment or a proffer or whatever the county attorney thinks is is wise, that we would include that, the scope of that work of offsite improvements in any application that we put forward, which would score these things much higher. And so we could go well beyond smart scale, but county revenue sharing, county budget and access pots of transportation funding that really are only available right now, but they're mostly available uh, for infrastructure improvements in low income communities.
Thank you, sir. I'm good for now. Thank you.
I I'll try to be brief. Going back to your budget and I I let me first state, but I think this is amazing, ambitious project that I'm, I absolutely love it. You know, I came from affordable housing. I was able to get here. Thank God for the army. Got me here, um, straightened me out. But uh, we, what I'm trying to say, you know, what's being asked tonight is that we're making a land use decision on something that stays with that land. And so there's some, a lot of moving parts to this and uncertainties and funding. And if, you know, this has to happen or that happens, and what happens if it does? You know, one thing we have to ask ourselves, and that's what we're asked to is, what if it doesn't happen? What if the project doesn't? What if Phase Two can't get funded and it can't be built? Now we have a piece of land that has a different designation on it or or or, you know, or it's somewhere in between where the budget has to include more market rate to make it go, that that market rate wouldn't wasn't, you know, the county or other are bringing in funding to subsidize what would have been in proffer. So those are the things that, you know, we're struggling with and trying to balance with all these moving parts and pieces and uncertainty and and, you know, o- opportunity to get dollars through the American um, rescue plan, but not guaranteed dollars. Um, and so one, one question going back to that is, as I understand the budgets, I'm trying to understand, you know, trying to weigh all those things. I saw, I think, eighty one million in lot sales from fair market value. Is that roughly correct? Is that, is that number derived from assuming four hundred and thirty eight affordable housing units or another?
Four thirty eight.
Four thirty eight. So if we're to go above that, then that that eighty one million presumably be decreased, and we'd have that funding would come from somewhere else to make up the the difference of that.
Exactly. And some of the ways that you can do that is you can increase Litech. So there is some, um, there is some revenue under the land for Litech. So when we sell something for Litech, it's not like, because Litech is not nearly as deeply subsidized as Habitat stuff. Litech has investors that get tax credits for investing in these properties. Um, we provide a discount on the land to Litech developers, but we sell it as well. So some of that um, eighty million dollars can be replaced with Litech without taking away a whole hundred and fifty per lot. The other things we can do as uh, we we can do what we do really, really well, which is try to push our costs down, try to bring more volunteers in to build cheaper. Try to do everything we can to to build more with less. And as the financials make sense and we can build more affordable housing, every time we can build an affordable house rather rather than sell a market rate lot, we will one hundred percent of the time because that's what we exist to do. Um, I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, that helps a lot. And I appreciate that. Um, kind of going to the second part, and I um, I really applaud your work to do the environmental remediation and, you know, the, I always say, when you get in that, you don't know until you get in the dirt and and you had to be confronted with that. So did I understand you correctly that you've already done a comprehensive to understand what the potential for Phase Two impact could be? And or is there?
Yes, uh, Andrew, who leads our development um, team will.
Probably answer the question. So as Dan pointed out earlier, we've done approximately two million dollars in remediation over the last several years, most importantly, the last twelve months. And we expect to spend about twenty million dollars over the course of the project. But we have a very good handle on where we are today. We've got some of the best consultants, probably the finest consultant team that you can assemble from folks as far away as Richmond in Northern Virginia onsite. I think Dan mentioned DEQ is also intimately involved in our progress, our reporting. And as Dan pointed out, we we pulled up about eleven or twelve of the two hundred and fifty gallon oil tanks so far. And as we've heard just recently, as recently as this evening, we have not yet found where we've had an oil tank that's found any sort of leakage as when we, when that oil tank or the septic tanks, the few septic tanks that we've removed uh, to be a problem. Do we have a handle on everything? Not yet, but we have a very good sense of what we're going to be getting into when we get into Phase Two, primarily from the work that we've done in the last twelve months in Phase One.
Right. So so you anticipate having to dedicate a significant part of your budget to continue to do remediation for Phase Two and and expect to see similar type of you know, impacts and and improve the land, the underlying land, just like you've done in Phase One?
Absolutely. And I think there's a speaker this evening that'll go in a bit more detail. I'll let I'll let them speak, but they'll go through a quick rundown of what we're anticipating, experiencing when we get into Phase Two. And again, it goes back to what we've experienced in Phase One. So we're pretty confident now we know where we need to get to in order to get Phase Two as pristine as Phase One. Thanks. That's all for now.
Okay, if that's if that's it for questions, um, I'd like to move on. Sure, go ahead.
So sir, if I'm an understanding, so you're saying?
You come back up for just a second for a quick clarifying question.
So you you know, so so I'm glad you spent all the money you've spent that's quick. But let me just, let me just ask one thing. So so the thirty three acres in Phase One, done? Is that is that a true statement?
The majority of that site, yes, sir. Majority of that site in Phase One has been under construction for a period of twelve months. The only thing left in Phase One is Village Two, which we hope to start on very shortly. I think that site plan is supposed to be approved. And when that plan gets approved.
You've gone past my question.
Okay.
So I'm talking about oil tanks and not, you have you have no other oil tanks that you're going to discover in in Phase One, and you've dealt with the sewage area in Phase One.
Phase One had no existing trailers on the property.
I I know that, but I'm 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 going to another question. That's that's a yes. So we have no issues in Phase One?
We've had issues in Phase One. No additional. We we've experienced oil tanks, septic tanks and drain fields as part of Phase One's construction today.
Okay. And you've done nothing with the other other ninety three acres?
Uh, no.
So we got three, three times as much land that we don't know whether or not there are tanks or what the sewage is down down there. And that's where actually where most of the, most of the uh, the community, that's where most of the community existed.
Correct.
One A and one B is the next village is part of Phase Two. Area one A had approximately twenty six existing mobile homes that we've relocated elsewhere in the park. With those twenty six trailers comes twenty six oil tanks.
Nothing there. And none of them leaked.
We haven't experienced any tanks that we've removed. And I believe there's been eleven tanks removed to date, and there's been no leaking. And we've got DEQ reports to confirm that.
Enter. Okay, that's enough tank counting. All right. So we're going to move on now to the the community part where uh, we get to hear from those of you who've signed up to speak. That if if you didn't sign up to speak already, you can still speak. So I have thirteen people signed up. And what I like to do is to ask you to at least line up three people deep uh, so that we can make sure that, you know, we don't have a long delay while one person steps down and then the next person walks to the front of the room. Uh, I've just been given a sheet with a handful of additional names. Um, but I understand, uh, let me just check with staff. This this typed list is for speaking in public, correct? Okay. Okay. Okay, gotcha. Lots of lists here to shuffle. So um, I'm going to call the the first three folks up. And then remember, you have three minutes to speak. You'll have a green light showing you that it's time to start speaking. You need to state your name and where you live. A yellow light will come on when you need to start wrapping up to finish. And then a red light means stop. So pretty simple. Green means go, red means caution. Almost running out of time and red means stop. If you have an interpreter, like I said at the beginning of the meeting, you will have extra time so that the interpreter has time to interpret what you said for us. And so that will be a six minute period. All right. So the first three folks I have signed up to speak are Louisa Candelario, Elliot Butler Cisneros, and Kathy Butler Cisneros. So a few three would come down and we'll have uh, Louisa speak first.
Hi, good, good afternoon or good evening now. Um, so my name is Louisa Candelario. I'm actually a city resident. I live at um, Sunrise Park, which is another Habitat um, community. Um, I've been a homeowner there for going on ten years. Um, I'm not an expert on numbers or things like that. Um, you guys have had a a whole lot of that today. I just want to come to tell you about my experience as a homeowner. When I look around the room, what I see that I have in common with a lot of the people here is that I'm the daughter of an immigrant. Um, my my parents, I'm a first generation American, uh, born and raised in the United States from parents who are now naturalized citizens. I'm a mom and I'm also a Habitat homeowner. And I just want to say that being, you know, when I first started with Habitat thirteen years ago, it was something that I never thought that I could accomplish. Like, my parents always talked about this American dream and about owning a home and in the United States. And it's something that I never thought that I could accomplish. And then when I came across Habitat, um, the dream became real. And I put in like the work I had did my, um, sorry, get get nervous. But anyway, I put in my hours of like doing my community service, like helping with other homes around the community, helping with mine as well, um, caulking and sanding and all kinds of crazy stuff that I never thought I could do. Um, I came to a lot of, went to a lot of city meetings. My kids stuffed envelopes. They they were a big part of the process as well. I started to see like a lot of growth in myself as well as my kids. And it makes me emotional just thinking of like all the work that a Habitat homeowner puts into their home makes you feel so like just confident in in yourself. It makes you want to rise. It it betters your credit. It it makes you a part of very like, just an upstanding citizen, someone who's very interested in taking care of their community. And my community was also previously a trailer park. Um, Habitat did a good job of not not displacing anyone. Uh, we have a building called The Promise Keeper where a lot of our trailer park residents live there. We've been able to mingle the community, all ages, races, um, different um, genders and things like that. My kids have grown up there ten years on the bus with the same kids in the green spaces. Beautiful area in in that location, which makes not only us feel good, but just everyone around, like the bus stops there, the people in the community. We've had several community days. We've had community cleanup days. We've had um, a lot of meetings there. We've had uh, you know, grandchildren born to some of the residents. We've had some residents pass. Um, we've, it's just been beautiful. It's been like such an amazing experience, and I just wanted you guys to know that. It doesn't provide you guys with a ton of facts, but it just gives you like that feeling, just letting you know. So, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. And don't be nervous. All right. Again, I'll just remind you guys, when you want to be solidarity, you can raise your hand. Okay. Uh, so Mr. Butler Cisneros, yes?
Hi, I'm Elliot Butler Cisneros. Last name is B U T L E R hyphen C I S N E R O S. My name became Butler Cisneros. It used to be Cisneros. Um, in September, I married that woman. And the person who married us, can you wave? A Habitat owner, Sharon Sinclair. So I'm really glad to be here. I've been involved uh, with Habitat in some really uh, different ways. We're actually going to be market uh, buyers in Phase One. We've we're and my um, stepdaughter, Ruby, can you wave? Ruby, uh, and Kathy and I will be a market buyers uh, in Phase One. We've already got our house. And um, we're just on fire. We're so excited about this community. A little bit, I want I want to share about where I came from. I came uh, well, from Colorado through New York. And I came down here uh, after the violence that occurred in two thousand and seventeen. I have a nonprofit that does work around difference. How do you get along with people? How do we get along with people who are different than we are? And when we moved down here, um, I began working with Heather Hires' mom, Susan. We created a program for called Higher Voices to work with area youth in our schools. Formerly, I'd been a a school principal. I directed the human rights. I directed the Human Rights Office for the City of Fort Collins, also taught at Norbe University multicultural classes. And the reason I'm telling you all of this is because, to me, cultivating bridges is really important. And this opportunity at Southwood is a chance to cultivate bridges. Race, socioeconomic class, religion. Southwood represents a next evolution of a neighborhood, of what a neighborhood can be. The lines and supports, Albemarle's affordable housing and comprehensive plans. So please consider supporting phase two of Southwood. It takes boldness and heart to take this kind of step for you as our governing body. It's not business as usual. It's a momentous undertaking. But this has such a strong foundation, it has such a strong partnership. And its time has come. Its time has come for us to cultivate these bridges together. Thank you for supporting the phase two of the redevelopment of Southwood.
Thank you.
Okay, do I wait for the green light? Or do I, oh, there it is. Hi, I'm Kathy Butler-Cisneros. You met my husband, Elliot. We live in Belmont in Charlottesville City. And as you know, we're moving with my daughter to, as market rate home buyers into phase one. I actually really want to start by thanking this body for your vision in approving phase one, and to urge you to as quickly as possible approve phase two. I'm so thrilled about this project in many ways. Here are a few things that I wrote down about why it's so important to me. It's vibrant, it's well-supported. We heard, I mean, I'm just blown away by how much, I didn't even already know about what's been done to support the land, the community, the infrastructure. It aligns strongly with the county's affordable housing plan. Habitat is awesomely on fire with providing low-income housing with phase one and more coming with phase two, assuming you all approve. The community creates this richness of culture, race, class that doesn't exist and that I and my family want to be in, that we are so excited to be in. I love that it encourages the use of this other amazing resource, Biscuit Run, and then it connects and encourages all the benefits of being out in nature that we keep learning more and more about. One thing I didn't know and that I really am really happy about is just how much Habitat has already contributed to the infrastructure in the county, these 12 years of cleanup and septic tank stuff and all this stuff. And on top of that comes affordable housing. And I just want to say that it's not just the current Southwood residents that benefit, it's people like me and my family. It's visionary and the, it brings together, like I said, people from different class, different race, different cultures. And when that can be done with intention, as it is being done, it just expands. It has the possibility to expand into this incredibly rich, rich part of our world that is right here in the county, that will be right here in the county. So I'm excited to live there and thank you for your vision and thank you for quickly approving phase two. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Our next three folks signed up to speak are Andy Miller, Alhena Cleveland, and Genesis Pina. So would you three come down? We'll start with Andy. Even though I've called your name, you still have to say it into the microphone for the record.
I'm Andy Miller. I am the Director of Real Estate Development for Piedmont Housing Alliance. And I'm here tonight both as a resident of Albemarle County and an advocate for affordable housing, but also a partner with Habitat on the Lytec development within Southwood Phase One. As most of us in this room already understand, affordable housing is an essential foundation that supports the well-being of our families and communities within Albemarle County. The stability it creates allows families to plan for their future, improves educational and health outcomes for residents, and lowers the risk of homelessness for vulnerable families. That opportunity for so many families in our region is slipping through their fingers. And for many others, it's out of reach and has been for quite some time. With rapidly rising home prices, increasing rental rates, and now inflationary pressures on family budgets, affordable housing is becoming increasingly harder to find. This is especially true for our most vulnerable households who are working in low-wage jobs, which are making up a larger share of our workforce. And to address this crisis, we need thoughtful, creative solutions that seek to produce change through meaningful partnerships. In my professional opinion, the plan in front of you is just that. It's as thoughtful at its core as evidenced by Habitat's commitment to a resident-led design process. This process has enabled current Southwood residents to actively participate in the revisioning of their community into a vibrant and inclusive mixed-income and mixed-use center. Its creativity is on full display through the proposal's ability to weave complexities of resident aspirations, financial requirements, and county development goals into a comprehensive vision for the transformation of the Southwood community. This is evidenced through alignment with the future land use designation, planned extension of the phase one neighborhood center, inclusion of 20 acres of green space, and the inclusion of 287 affordable homes. As an architect by training and now an affordable housing developer by profession, I can attest that the thoughtfulness and creativity of these proposals are reflected in the partnerships that support them. Albemarle County has been a strong and creative partner for Southwood, and I would encourage that this partnership continue through the support of this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alhena Cleveland, and I'm also a Habitat homeowner. 2017, we moved into our home in Wickham Pond in Crusade, and we've been so happy living there. When we first got there, my son was like, this is like in a movie. I can't believe that we're living here, you know? And it even makes my skin crawl just remembering. We've been so happy. He's, I feel so blessed. I love Habitat. So this is my way to showing, to pay forward what they have done for us, that there would be no chance for us to get into that home, into that area. I mean, homes go for like half a million dollars around where we live. So they helped us with so much. They, I mean, we had meetings with our neighbors, so we get to know each other before we move into the actual place. Now I hope that I have been a little bit more, we were doing so much stuff. Everybody is like single moms, the ones that we live right there. So we're so busy working, taking care of our kids and everything, and then making times to go to the meetings, to put your work for the construction. And so it was a little bit overwhelming at some time, but now I see what their point was, getting us to know each other so we can get along and we can learn that we're more alike than different. We just give each other the time and just, you know, give a little. Affordable housing is like non-existent here. I was doing real estate for a little while, the houses were like $330,000 to start. Now they're getting a lot higher. It's getting more expensive everywhere. So now with the market being so, everybody wants to buy a house, even cars being so expensive. Before, I was paying rent not knowing if next year they were going to raise my rent, if they were going to sell my place where I was living and then maybe have to leave. Oh, well, thank you. Let's see, I have a little minute. Yeah, I'm sorry. I was going to write everything down, but I was just so nervous. I said, I'm going to forget everything, so I'm just going to go. I want to thank the family that is going to live in Southwood and that they welcome diversity and especially in times where people are so crazy, it's so nice to see that somebody still wants to take a chance and meeting somebody that is different because of their background. I was born in Mexico, so I came here when I was 12. And because I'm not as dark as some other people, they think that I'm not, you know, but I am. I'm from Chiapas, and my family is half Mexican, half American. So sometimes people don't know that I'm Mexican and they're saying things, and I'm like, hey, I'm Mexican, okay? So please. But I love diversity. I love everything. We're all the same. I mean, if you cut us, we're going to bleed the same red. So, you know, I just think we need more love. That's it. But, thank you, Habitat. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Genesis. And what I will do is very fast, so probably we'll finish before the red light. I'm a resident of Southwood. I'm nervous.
It's okay. Take your time.
Okay. I give many thanks to the Habitat for giving me the opportunity to speak before Albemarle County, and a country most respected by the residents of Charlottesville. And with respect that all of you here deserve, I would like to say a few things. Many of us Hispanics have dreamed of living in a home in this beautiful country of the United States, but few of us have the resource to achieve this dream. And for this reason, we are very grateful to Albemarle County and Habitat that we have been given this opportunity to able to reach and/or dream of being able to live in a home opportunity, live in a home many like me are in need of a sense of a respectable home. And I know many others like myself are equally in need of a home. With all respect to Albemarle County, please reconsider your work to continue this lovely project and help us. We are many families that have hopes of home ownership and with this project, myself and many others are hoping for better housing. Thank you, and that's all I will say.
Okay. Thank you. You did great. Okay, the next three people we have signed up to speak are Lulu Vasquez, Lulu Lopez, and Lervin Malgar.
My name is Lourdes Vasquez. I have lived in Southwood for 12 years, and I have participated in planning with more than 150 hours.
You might, I'm sorry, you might need to pull the microphone down to your mouth a little bit. There you go.
Okay. In March of this year, my family and I had-
Mi nombre es Lourdes Vazquez. Soy mexicana. He vivido en Southwood por 12 años y he participado en la planeación más de 150 horas. En marzo de este año, mi familia y yo tuvimos la oportunidad de escoger el lote en que vamos a construir nuestra casa. Les invito que apoyen este proyecto. Sin ustedes, nuestro sueño y el de mis vecinos, se van a venir abajo. Queremos una casa digna en la que mi familia se sienta segura y feliz. Las casas de las rentas del condado de Albemarle son muy caras y con el apoyo de Habitat vamos a poder adquirir una vivienda que podamos pagar. Ustedes son nuestros representantes y si votamos por ustedes es porque creemos en sus valores, porque sabemos que toman las mejores decisiones y lo hacen por el bienestar de la comunidad. Southwood es una comunidad llena de gente que trabaja y se esfuerza por el futuro de nuestros hijos, porque sabemos que ellos merecen las mismas oportunidades que todos los residentes de este país, sin importar sus orígenes. Quiero agradecer a cada una de las personas que se han interesado en el bienestar de Southwood. Ustedes nos conocen y saben que dentro de cada uno de nosotros existe un ser humano capaz de lograr lo que se propone a través del trabajo y el esfuerzo. Muchas gracias y les agradezco que apoyen el segundo proyecto. Gracias.
My name is Lourdes Vasquez. I have lived in Southwood for 12 years and have participated in planning with more than 150 hours. In March of this year, my family and I had the opportunity to choose the law on which to build our house. I invite you to support this project. Without you, my dream and that my neighbors will have come crashing down. We want a decent house where my family feels safe and happy. Houses and rent in Albemarle County are very expensive, and with the support of Habitat, we will be able to acquire a house that we can afford. You are our representatives, and if we vote for you, it is because we believe in our values, because we know that you make the best decisions and do so for the well-being of the community. Southwood is a community full of people who work and strive for the futures of our children because we know that they deserve the same opportunities as all residents of the country, regardless of their origins. I want to thank you and every person who has taken an interest that in the well-being of Southwood, you know us, and you know that within each one of us, there is a human being capable of achieving what is proposed through work and effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mi nombre es Lourdes Lopez, pero todos me llaman Lulu. Entonces, quería hacerles saber esto, que es mitucaya la que pasó anterior. Entonces, he vivido en Southwood por nueve años. Tengo más de 100 horas como voluntaria. Yo estoy muy agradecida porque Habitat nos ha dado la oportunidad de poder aplicar para comprar una casa. Es un proceso largo porque hay que dar mucho de nuestro tiempo. Pero yo sé que todos queremos estar en una comunidad tranquila y nos sentimos seguros. Mis hijos van al club, conviven con más niños. Tenemos muchos amigos que queremos apoyar y con que convivimos las buenas y las malas. Hemos vivido en esta área y si nos hemos quedado aquí es porque no hemos ganado mucho dinero para rentar o comprar en otro condado, en el condado de Albemarle. Es muy caro. Las condiciones de nuestra trailer no son las mejores. Pasamos mucho frío y mucho calor a veces. Es imposible, pero nuestro hogar es un lugar donde nuestros hijos han crecido y vienen creciendo. Los pueden ver y queremos vivir ahí. No los queremos ir. Tenemos fe de que este proyecto continúe y trabajamos duro por ver nuestros hechos realidad. Tenemos el apoyo de las personas de Habitat que reconocen que nuestras cualidades y nuestros respetos es por lo que somos. Si ustedes nos apoyan en este proyecto, si ustedes no los apoyan en este proyecto, va a afectar a más de 300 familias, gente trabajadora, gente responsable. Tenemos un acento y color de piel, pero ante los ojos de Dios, todos somos iguales. Ser blanco te da privilegios? Acaso el color de nuestra piel, nuestro acento, nuestro ingreso van a detener? Si este proyecto se aprueba, sí o no? Señores, les pido, por favor, que Dios y que les ponga en su corazón que se apruebe por nuestros hijos. Queremos vivir en Southwood. Queremos vivir en Southwood.
Good evening. My name is Lourdes Lopez. Well, my name is Scarlett Malgar and I am her daughter. And I have lived in Southwood for more than nine years and I have more than 100 hours as a volunteer. I am very grateful because Habitat has given us the opportunity to apply to buy a house. It is a long process in which we have to give a lot of our time, but I know that we all want to be in this community. It is calm and safe. My children go to the club and learn to live with other kids. We have many friends who support us and with whom we live together. Through thick and thin, we have lived in this area and if we have stayed here, it's because we do not earn much money to rent or buy air wells in Albemarle County. It's very expensive. The conditions of our trailer is not the best. We are very cold sometimes. The heat is unbearable. But it is our home, the place where our children grew up. We have faith in that project will continue. We work hard to see our dreams come true and we have support of the Habitat staff who recognize our qualities and respect us for who we are. If you do not support this project, you will affect more than 300 families. We are hardworking and responsible people. We have different accents and skin colors, but in the eyes of God, we are all the same. Being white gives us privilege. Perhaps the color of our skin or accents or our income will determine the project is approved or not. Thank you. And we really want to make a community in Southwood and we would appreciate it if you guys help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Lurvin Malgar. Soy hondureña. Soy miembro de la comunidad de Southwood por nueve años cuando este proyecto era nada más un sueño por cumplir. Pero ahora estamos viendo volverse realidad y por eso es que necesitamos su apoyo para continuar con este proyecto y no esperamos un no por respuesta. ¿Qué es Southwood para nosotros? Somos una comunidad multicultural que no tiene una bandera de representación. Casi la mayoría de nuestros miembros jóvenes no conocen otra bandera que no sea la de Estados Unidos porque este es su país, su estado y su condado con el que cuentan para tener el apoyo de un mejor futuro y un mejor hogar. Levanten la mano si apoyan este proyecto. Muchas gracias. Good evening. My name is Lurvin Malgar. I am a member of Southwood community. I'm from Honduras. And I have lived in Southwood for nine years. When this project, it was nothing more than a dream come true. But now, we are seeing come true, be a reality. And that is why we need your support to continue with this project. And we are not expecting enough answers. What is Southwood for us? We are a community multicultural that's not halfway represented flat. Almost the majority of our youngest members do not know any other flat that are the United States because this is their country, state, and county that they come on to have a support of a better future and a better house. Raise your hand if you support this project. Thank you so much. I really hope face those comes true because we want to live there. We want to these dreams come true. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone. And thanks to the audience for helping out with the hands up and down. So I'm gonna call the next four people on this list and don't worry if I don't call any of them. I have another list too to go to. But the next four I'm gonna call down in this order. Jocelyn Rosso Castillo, Tatiana Serrato, Alfredo Martinez, and Martha Doggett. So we'll start with Jocelyn.
Hello, I'm Jocelyn. I would like to read in Spanish first. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Jocelyn.
Can you just tilt the mic a little bit? There you go. They're very temperamental.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Jocelyn Rosa Castillo. Me siento honrada por poder hablar de la importancia de este proyecto para mí. He vivido en Southwood desde que nací y también vivo en un hogar de siete. Este proyecto de la reorganización es importante para mí porque podríamos lograr muchas cosas al poder vivir en una casa propia, completa, nueva, con tanto espacio. En nuestra trailer, nos acomodamos con el poco espacio que tenemos. No es justo que no podamos construir por la preocupación de sobreprobar Mountain View cuando podemos expandir las escuelas como lo que está haciendo Croset. Como comunidad, estamos trabajando juntos para poder tener nuestra vivienda accesible. Estamos trabajando lo mejor posible para que este proyecto suceda. Gracias por dejarme hablar. Espero que diga así a la solitud de rezonificación. Good afternoon. My name is Jocelyn Rosa Castillo and I am honored to be able to speak the importance of this project. I have lived in Southwood since I was born and I live in a household of seven. This redevelopment project is important to me because we accomplished many things, being able to live in a whole new house of our own with so much space. In our trailer, we made ourselves fit with the little space that we have. It isn't fair that we can't continue because of the worry of overpopulating Mountain View when we can expand the schools like Rosé is doing. As a community, we are working together to be able to have our affordable housing. We are working our best to make this project happen. Thank you for letting me speak and I hope you say yes to the rezoning application. For the audience, if you support the redevelopment project, please raise your hand.
I think you got a double hand raised there. They'd already raised.
Para los que están de acuerdo con el proyecto, por favor levante la mano.
Okay.
Thank you.
So triple hand raise. All right.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Tatiana Serrato y he vivido en Southwood por seis años. Yo sé que ustedes quizás saben que Southwood existe porque está en el mapa, pero realmente no saben lo que Southwood es. El parque se ve como un basurero y no queremos que se vea así, pero no tenemos el soporte para mejorar la situación. Habitat nos está dando la oportunidad de mejorar nuestro estilo de vida, de tener una casa con calefacción y aire acondicionado para poder criar a nuestros hijos. En enero de este año tuvimos una fuerte nevada y mis bebés tenían seis meses en ese momento. Habitat nos promocionó ayuda con el hotel y ellos hicieron hasta lo imposible por ayudarnos porque sí saben las condiciones en las que vivimos. Los árboles se caen constantemente poniendo en peligro nuestras vidas. Nadie se pone en nuestros zapatos. Necesitamos un hogar. Nosotros no le estamos quitando nada a nadie. Este país es multicultural y está formado por inmigrantes. Deben aprobar este proyecto porque los que vivimos aquí somos personas, no animales. Quiero dar un futuro a mis hijos y un futuro sano. La única bandera que ellos conocen es la de los Estados Unidos. Quiero que las personas que vengan después de nosotros tengan la oportunidad de tener una vivienda digna. Realmente no hay una razón lógica para decir que no. Tenemos que mejorar las condiciones de todos los habitantes de Southwood porque somos parte del condado. Les invito a que visiten nuestra comunidad y entrevisten a las personas para que así ustedes puedan darse cuenta en la urgencia que el vecindario de Southwood tiene y solo así podrán entender la necesidad de cada familia y ya después de eso pues pueden tomar su decisión. Muchas gracias.
Hello, my name is Tatiana Serrato. I have lived in Southwood for six years. I know you know that Southwood exists because it is on the map, but you don't really know what Southwood is like. The park looks like a dump and we don't want it to look like that. But we don't have the support to improve the situation. Habitat is giving us the opportunity to improve our lifestyle, to have a home with heating and air conditioning so that we can raise our children. In January of this year, we had a heavy snowfall and my babies were six months old. Habitat provided us with help, with a hotel and they did everything possible to help us because they know the conditions in which we live. Trees are falling constantly and endangering our lives. No one puts themselves in our shoes. We need a home. We are not taking anything away from anyone. This country is multicultural and is made up of immigrants. They must approve, well, you actually. You must approve this project because those of us who live here are people, not animals. I want to give my children a future and a healthy future. The only flag my children know is that of the United States. I want the people who come after us to have the opportunity to have a decent housing. There is no logical reason to say no. We have to improve the conditions for all Southwood audience because we are part of the county. We invite you to visit our community and interview people. That way, they will realize, well, actually you, will realize the urgent need that the neighborhood of Southwood has. Only then you will be able to understand the need of each family and after that, you can make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, Comisión de Planificación, comunidad aquí presente. Gracias por venir y apoyar este proyecto. Mi nombre es Alfredo Martinez. He vivido en Southwood por casi 16 años. Estoy aquí para hablar en referencia al proyecto de Southwood. Este proyecto es muy importante, no solo para mi familia, sino también para muchas personas en nuestra comunidad. Habitat está dándonos la oportunidad de vivir en viviendas más seguras, saludables y accesibles. Este proyecto es importante porque muchas de las familias que vivimos en esta comunidad no tenemos acceso a muchos recursos y muchos de nosotros somos emprendedores. Estamos tratando de sobrevivir con este proyecto. Tenemos la oportunidad de disfrutar de una mejor vivienda a precios que vamos a poder cubrir. Tengo dos hijos y a ellos les encanta vivir aquí porque han tenido acceso a muchos programas como un programa de fútbol, mejores escuelas. Es importante para que mis hijos tengan acceso a estos recursos para que puedan crecer en un ambiente seguro y feliz. Habitat ha hecho un increíble trabajo en Southwood. Desde el principio, yo he asistido a las reuniones de planificación de la comunidad que Habitat continuamente realiza y me impresionó el esfuerzo de ellos para trabajar y incluirlos en este proyecto y ayudar a las personas a quedarse en esta comunidad. Habitat siempre ha dado a la comunidad una magnífica información durante todo el proceso de este proyecto. Hay... Hay mucha unidad en Southwood y me encanta vivir en esta comunidad. Charlottesville es una ciudad llena de comunidades que promueven el amor y la inclusión. Espero que ustedes den una decisión positiva a la segunda fase de este proyecto para el beneficio de todos. Gracias.
Good evening, members of the panel, everyone here, and thank you for your time. My name is Alfredo Martinez and I've been living in Southwood for about 16 years. I'm here to speak in reference to the Southwood project. This project is very important to not only me and my family, but also many others in our community. Habitat is giving us the opportunity to live in more secure, healthy, and affordable housing. This project is important because many of the families that live here in this community don't have access to many resources and with many of us being entrepreneurs, we are just trying to survive. With this project, we have the chance of living in better housing at prices that we can afford. I have two sons and they love living here because they have had access to many programs, such as a good soccer program and better schools. It is important to me that my children have access to these resources so they can grow up in a safe and happy environment. Habitat has done an incredible job in Southwood. I have been going to the community planning meetings that Habitat holds since the beginning and I've been really impressed how they have always included us in the project and have helped people to be able to stay in this community. They have always given the community the best information possible throughout this process. There's so much unity in Southwood and I really love living in this community. In Charlottesville, I've always seen so many signs that promote love and inclusivity. I'm hoping that when this decision is made, it is made for the benefit of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here reading with Martha Doggett. My name is Martha Doggett. I've been living in Southwood for 28 years. My trailer was built in 1993 and is falling apart. The roof is leaking and the breakers not working well. When it rains, the water runs behind the panel box and it's scary. I have to put buckets everywhere. We need these homes. It will be better for everyone. Habitat is doing many things for us, but there's not enough. I feel embarrassed to share this, but I'm just going to tell you the truth. I know that you can help to have a safe place that I can call home. Other people also need a place to live. I have many friends and I wanted them to be here. I like to be around people, many nice people in this neighborhood. I've never had a problem. My neighbors are always willing to help if I have a problem. I love Michelle. She is very helpful and when I need her, she is always willing to help me. Michelle is a Habitat staff member. All of our doctor's appointments are at UVA and when we are sick, it is close to get there, especially for emergencies. We have everything we need around us. It will be better for us if we can have a place that we can afford. I would love to move into something new. In my life, I have never had anything new.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna move to my sign-in sheet now and I'm gonna call these three folks. I just need to make sure if there's any duplications. Okay. All right. So the next three people I have signed up are Richard... I can't read your handwriting, Richard. Richard Tremblay or Trembe. Lourdes Vasquez and Rick Randolph.
Good evening, members of the commission. Richard Tremblay, I'm a resident of the Samuel Miller district and also on the Habitat Board of Directors. You've heard tonight and seen slides tonight about some of the environmental challenges at Southwood and its redevelopment. And I just wanted to give you a quick summary of the total scope of that work. And I emailed this to you earlier in the day. And this is just the Phase Two area that I'm talking about today or now. There's over 300 trailers to be moved out of the community, including outbuildings next to most of those trailers. As Andrew talked about and Dan as well, there's over 400 oil storage tanks. So far, only empty ones have been discovered. And septic tanks, there's only over 400 oil and septic tanks that each have to be carefully dug up and removed and documented. up and removed and documented. There's more than 50 septic drain fields which serve multiple homes that have to be carefully taken offline in time when, when there's an alternative in place and removed. There's about 20,000 linear feet of asbestos water line which has to be carefully dug up and carefully removed under, with the proper permits. There's about 10,000 feet of sanitary sewer line, old sanitary sewer line that has to also be carefully dug up and moved off-site. And there's about 80 acres of existing infrastructure, roads, concrete sidewalks, electric lines which also has to be removed and carefully taken away. And then based on our experience in the first phase, there'll be about 100,000 cubic yards of dirt that has to be stockpiled and moved off-site into an approved area. And once this rezoning is approved, Habitat, as you've heard about tonight, will continue to seek federal and state and county grants to make this all happen along with the other sources of revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next person I have is Lords Vasquez. Do you already go in? Okay. And then Rick Randolph? You left, but you left a statement. Okay. All right, then the next three folks I have on the list are Abigail Turner, Martha Doggett, and Pam Riley. I think she already, yeah, Martha already spoke, sorry. Trying to work with two pieces of paper. So Abigail Turner.
Good evening. I'm Abigail Turner. I live in the Samuel Miller district and I want to celebrate. I want to celebrate the advances that Charlottesville and Albemarle and really Virginia have made in terms of breaking the mold and creating something that's still in the progress of being a model for the country. And I don't think I'm overstating and here's why. I'm a retired civil rights lawyer and I spent 40 years, more than 40 years, representing people who were low income and a lot of that was housing work. And a lot of it had to do with discrimination, but I also represented a housing development, a nonprofit housing developer in rural Alabama and the most poverty-stricken parts of Alabama. So I know to some extent the kind of problems that Dan has faced and the kind of problems that you face and the decisions you face in making decisions. And this is a big deal, what's being built here, what's been built. I am also one of Nan's volunteers. I'm a master gardener and my organization, the Piedmont Master Gardeners, has a program where we help the families, this is not as part of Southwood, but we help families landscape their properties before they move into them. And it means that we've heard the stories and I've heard really convincing stories about what a difference even being involved with Habitat is and what its difference it's going to make with children. And one of the things that's been so much fun for us is the children's involvement with the landscaping. My colleagues told me on the phone today that last Friday when we were doing landscaping in Lockham Hills, two nine-year-olds had big plastic trucks and they were moving the mulch from the back of the house to the front of the house, totally outdoing all the adults. As a, as a taxpayer, I want to urge you to approve the second phase and to do it now because with interest rates rising, with the federal funds that are available, the county cannot afford and and we citizens in the county cannot afford to not take advantage of the timeframe that we have to get the money that Dan described to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Firehawk and Commissioners. My name is Pam Riley and I live in the Mill Creek neighborhood, which is in the South Side. I'd like to thank you all for your service and I would also really like to thank the staff for their thorough and professional staff report for this evening. I just want to begin by saying that I support Southwood redevelopment. I support Habitat and I support affordable housing. I think many of you know that that's been a lifelong career of mine. I stand with the residents of Southwood and all the residents and the businesses of the South Side. As a longtime resident in the Scottsville district and as the former planning commissioner representing the Scottsville district during the rezoning of Phase One, I have repeatedly advocated for more affordable housing and for the protection of the legacy residents of Southwood. I have a degree in community and regional planning and most of my working career has been devoted to the creation and the preservation of affordable housing. I'm writing you and I sent you this in, in, you know, in an email and I'm also wanting to get this in the record in person and for those in the audience. I'm here tonight to urge you to follow the staff recommendation to not approve the ZMA this evening. I believe that this is a worthy Phase Two. I believe it needs more time and I do believe the staff recommendations have really addressed the potentially disastrous impacts of particularly schools, roads, and the impacts on the park as something that really needs to be worked out before this goes forward. The applicant itself has admitted that they've rushed this, that they haven't actually been able to provide all the information that's necessary and they do come forward tonight with some proffers and some even amendments to the proffers of what was provided to you in writing. However, there's still some really, really sticky issues here and the school impact issue is the critical one. We really need to be careful about this decision to rush this because I believe that there really is not just the impacts of this application at stake, but the precedent we've been establishing by allowing developers to come with these applications and not address the impacts that are being made. And I really do, I'm happy that the current residents will be able to go to Mountain View, but I'm very concerned about all the other children in the market rate homes and all along Avon Fifth Street. This, this is an issue that the planning commission has discussed for years. This has been a building catastrophe. We are so overcapacity that it's not an issue that can be ignored and it does sound like there's a proffer or an offer of selling land for a site in, in the neighborhood in Phase Two. It would be great if the, you could give it more time to work this out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that concludes the people I have on this list. I have a couple of names that have been crossed out and listed as on Zoom.
Yes.
Okay.
At this time, if there's anybody on the Zoom meeting that would like to speak, please raise your hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is on the Zoom meeting, just to, and then we'll come back to anyone who didn't sign up.
All right. Right now I have three people. The first one is Ken Garrison. Ken, please unmute yourself, state your name and address and if you're affiliated with a group or organization, when you start speaking, your three minutes will start.
Hello, my name is Ken Garrison. I am a resident of a community adjacent to Southwood, but I am speaking tonight on behalf of Sean Bridges, who works on the, is a member of the Fifth and Avon Advisory Committee. I will read Sean's words into the record. As a homeowner in Southwood since 2005, I have seen the South Side grow over the years as my daughter worked her way through Mountain View Elementary, Walton Middle School, and now Monticello High School. The longstanding plans for Habitat to redevelop Southwood without displacement has been something that many of us have been excited to see for many years. As the development plan has became refined, I have expressed various concerns regarding staging, buffers, and community impact while continuing to support the redevelopment that would address these concerns. As someone who runs bikes and drives along Fifth Street, extended in Old Lynchburg regularly, I see firsthand the current state of our traffic and our road waves and how these conditions have worsened without significant improvements being conducted in conjunction with the development of new residences. Traffic where Sunset Avenue extended and Old Lynchburg meet Fifth Street extended and Old Lynchburg Road already have significant backups which have led to multiple accidents, close calls, and I witnessed this at various intersections. BDOT's proposed changes to mitigate where they forced right turn, U-turn lanes, and/or a traffic circle should provide improvement, but that does not account for the traffic that will come with Phase One and Phase Two. The existing development of the Admiral Business Campus and related apartments and Phase One development in Southwood will add to the pressure to those intersections and increase the need for enhanced public transportation, better bike and pedestrian access. Phase One Development of Southwood and other projects underway do not provide adequate proffers to address current traffic, pedestrian or bike activity. You say nothing of the future impact of these developments. This is further concerning when you consider the scale of Southwood's Phase Two. At the November 18th, 2021 Fifth and Avon Advisory Meeting, Admiral County and Habitat for Humanity redevelopment representative presented to the committee, based on the information arrived during the meeting, that there were 331 trailers and approximately 1,300 residents in Southwood. Phase One of the Southwood redevelopment provides for 335 residents to be constructed, 84 Habitat affordable units and 121 PHA affordable units and 128 market units. Based on these numbers, it appears that 84 to 205 residences could move from a trailer to affordable housing, thus adding 120 to 250 net new residences in Southwood, which equates to 470 to 900.
Your time is up.
Okay. If I can add one last statement. To allow the continued redevelopment of Southwood without the developers taking responsibility for the significant expanding and impact to traffic, schools, environment, and county services without providing meaningful mitigation plans would be irresponsible of the county and the staff. So I am Sean Bridges, Member of Fifth and Avon Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Next, we have Stephen Cornelson. Stephen, please unmute yourselves, state your name and address, you're affiliated with a group or organization, and your time starts when you start speaking.
Hello, my name is Stephen Cornelson. I work at the University of Virginia and my family and I are purchasing a home in Southwood Phase One. My wife has taught at Mountain View Elementary for five years. And I want to highlight two of the major concerns raised by the county staff in their report. One is the schools and the other is the traffic. I think both of these things, Mountain View Elementary is already overcapacity regardless of what happens with Southwood Phase Two. And as was noted about the traffic concerns on Fifth Street Extended and Old Lynchburg, there's already overcapacity issues regardless of what's decided on Southwood Phase Two. And so I think those are things that the county has already been planning for. In the fiscal 23 budget and the CIP, there's plans for a new elementary school for the Southern feeder pattern. Additionally, there are a host of projects from BDOT, Smart Scale, et cetera, to address the concerns on Fifth Street. If we hear the timeline for Phase Two, starting as early as 2025 and lasting potentially 15 years, it's going to take a long time for an increase in density to show up in school enrollment numbers. If we're talking about a projected 95 kids max when it's full density, that might not show up until 2040. And so what is noted is a negative thing in the review, I would actually say is a positive because the county is taking measures to provide the adequate and necessary infrastructure on both the school front and for the roads to provide sufficient capacity by the time the density is realized in this project. And so I would say, given the macroeconomic factors, the interest rates, the ARPA funding available, this is actually a real great strategic chance for the county where these other things are already in motion to take advantage of this opportunity to move this project forward, knowing that by the time infrastructure is needed, it will be there and it will be in place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Peter Krebs. Peter, state your name, address, you're affiliated with a group or organization, and your time starts when you start speaking. Peter, I need you to unmute yourself, please.
Okay, hopefully you can hear me now. Great. Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commission and members of the public. I'm Peter Krebs from the Piedmont Environmental Council. I'm a Charlottesville resident. PEC supports Phase Two of the Southwood redevelopment. We believe that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It will provide additional housing in an appropriate location, including much-needed affordable housing. We have some areas where we think the proposal could be more fully clarified before the project gets final approval from the Board of Supervisors. Hickory Street will be a major transportation connector and not just for residents of Phase Two. Hickory will also function as a through street for residents in the southern urban area and provide access to the western entrance of Biscuit Run Park. As such, the street must be designed and constructed as a complete street with sidewalks and protected bike lanes. We've seen these described in some of the literature, but they're not apparent in the drawings I've seen. Secondly, eastments for future connection to Biscuit Run Park described in the proffer should link to the public road network, excuse me, to the public road network so they will be accessible to all. That way, they serve the broader public interest and remove ambiguity. That's just a few words, but I think it'll, it'll make a big difference. We wouldn't want the county connecting the park to a private area. Third, there's a clear need for a trailhead park in somewhere near the southeast corner of the project. This will serve park visitors from Southwood and other locations too. We have also heard that residents need space to store commercial vehicles. These functions are quite different and should not be conflated, particularly if only 10 spaces are being provided. We applaud Habitat's resident-led approach to redevelopment. We look forward to working with our partners there, at the county, and with Southwood residents to bring about a community that is healthy, natureful, and a high-quality place to live. Thank you all for your great work.
Thank you. At this time, I don't have anybody else with their hand raised.
Okay, so there's no one else on the Zoom?
Sorry. Somebody raised their hand. Well, no, they took it down. Nope, it's back up. Okay. Next, we have Matt Lawless. Matt, please unmute yourself, state your name and address and if you're affiliated with a group or organization, and your time starts as soon as you start speaking.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name is Matthew Lawless. I live at 495 Valley Street in Scottsville and I serve as Scottsville's Town Administrator. Part of my job is to advocate for regional policy which benefits the town of Scottsville, so I'm making a rare public comment from town to county government. This important county decision also affects the town and I believe the town will be well-served by your vote to approve the Habitat rezoning proposal as presented. From my limited perspective in town, I respectfully disagree with the county staff opinion of the decision factors. The infrastructure issues are surmountable and the project design and plan alignment is excellent. Scottsville is now beginning to see increased development pressure coming from the strong Charlottesville housing market. Prices for existing homes are increasing and Town Council is discussing workforce and middle-class housing affordability as an important issue in a way which did not happen five or 10 years ago. The town's comprehensive plan acknowledges our responsibility towards regional housing solutions and we are trying to do our part. We have been very clear about welcoming Habitat for Humanity to build in Scottsville and they acknowledge the invitation to serve our part of the region, but their capacity, like every organization, is limited. They have only but so much staff time and financial ability to absorb multiple complex projects. It seems important to Scottsville that Southwood proceed on schedule and as planned. A good phased plan was made in the past and that precedent should be respected. I think I can successfully bring a small Habitat home building project to Scottsville if Habitat remains on firm footing at Southwood. This throughput on the housing development pipeline is critical to meet our regional housing needs. Conversely, if Southwood is delayed or falls short, Scottsville will suffer consequences. Increased housing demand throughout the reason will impact working-class residents of Scottsville. My neighbors, bartenders, daycare teachers, hospital workers may be displaced out of our community. I have counseled both business and residential tenants who are in tears because the rent is going up faster than their income and they don't want to leave Scottsville. Commissioners, your swift action to rezone and continue the Southwood project helps create the needed supply of homes in our market and alleviate some of this demand pressure. That buys me a little more time to work out the appropriate neighborhood projects here. neighborhood projects here so we can do our part in Scottsville. Habitat's excellent proposal at Southwood Phase Two helps us all. Thank you for listening and for all your public service.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I don't have anyone with their hand up.
For sure. Okay, so there was a gentleman in the back, I think he wanted to speak. And if you didn't sign up, you're still welcome to come up and speak. So come downstairs. Is there anyone else? Okay, there's a couple people. Three, four. Yep, that's fine. You guys can just line up in orderly fashion.
Good evening. First of all, thank you for your good work that you guys are doing. I applaud you guys a lot. Yes, indeed, we need this housing a lot. I'm a Habitat current buyer, and this house go a long way to help us. I've been in Charlottesville for ten years, and I've rented all my life. And every month is one way or the other. You pack your car here, you go, it's been told away, a whole lot of rules you need to follow. I mean, we are, I mean, law-abiding citizens, and we work hard here. We pay our taxes, we do everything we're supposed to do to promote, I mean, I mean, Charlottesville and Albemarle. So if we have a chance, that Habitat is helping us. I give it a great pressure that, I mean, if all of us go, I mean, through our hearts, I know most of you guys, I mean, sorry, excuse me to this now, I know most of you have your own houses. Imagine if you rent, the hassle you go through. This is what Habitat is trying to solve, and they are going a lot of it. Some of these managers, they don't sleep. In the night, they will call you, I need your papers, bring your paperwork. They go through a whole lot of this to get us, I mean, in process. So I prayed with you to approve this zone for us so that all of us will have a place to sleep. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, don't forget to say your names.
My name is Larry Scott. I live in the city. I wasn't going to say anything tonight. I would listen to everybody, and my heart woke me up here. You can take all the alphabets and put them together, and you can't come up with a word to describe how a person might feel to be living in an affordable, safe home, or to have their own home. I can, because I'm a Habitat homeowner since two thousand and six. I was homeless, and when I said homeless, I was homeless. And Habitat helped me to live my dream. So I'm asking you guys to help Southwood to live their dreams. You know, I worked at the Habitat store for many years, near the office, and everyone that works for Habitat is not doing it just for a paycheck. We all believe in what we do, and we work hard in trying to make it better for everyone, and we really believe in this. And I know you guys got y'all, I'm not good with politics, I'm not, I'm not with, nothing with politics, but, because I don't understand it, but I know y'all got guidelines and things like that, so I'm not saying, you know, no shortcuts or anything. But, you know, it's people that really care about everyone else. And I know you guys do, too. But if you could find it in your heart to pass the zoning, we would really appreciate it. I know this is a serious business night. It's not about fun and games, but if I had a magic wand, saying yes to zoning, I would wave it in front of all y'all faces. But since I don't have it, please listen to your heart. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Scott doesn't want to admit he has a magic wand. Planning Commission members and staff, thank you so much for your service. I'm Overton McGee with Habitat for Humanity, Virginia. We're the state support organization for the thirty-nine Habitat affiliates in Virginia. I'm not an expert on Phase Two, but I was Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity of Greater Charlottesville when we bought Southwood fifteen years ago. So that means I've been able to witness fifteen years of incredible cooperation between Albemarle County and Habitat. In fact, it started before we bought Southwood. County elected officials, planners, school officials, social services, the sheriff's department, we're all extremely concerned about Southwood and all encouraged us to buy it. And of course, that cooperation has continued to the present, even with a financial commitment from the county to Habitat for Southwood. So thank you so much. I hope that you will help Habitat maximize the affordable housing at Southwood by minimizing the proffer requirements. I think so often of relatives who, in the nineteen forties, nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties, were able to buy homes in the Charlottesville area on working-class salaries. And we know that that's no longer possible. In fact, it takes a miracle for low-income families to become homeowners in our area, a miracle like Southwood. It takes a community to help low-income families achieve their dream of homeownership, and thank you for being part of that community.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Melissa Spitzer. I live in Belmont. I am a soon-to-be homeowner. I, three years ago, I know you've heard a lot of stories, three years ago, I left an abusive marriage, an abusive, took my four children, left, lived in a camper for a few months, and then I came to Charlottesville. And affordable housing, me and my five children, me and my four children, live in a two-bedroom apartment. The first night we stayed there, we had nothing but a pile of blankets. We laid on the floor, and I told them, give me time. I drive a school bus. I work for the school. I am blessed that Habitat has given me this opportunity. Many times, I keep thinking, what's the catch? Where do they get out of it? What's the catch? Where's the, it's not going to work out. In September, I'm going to move my four children into our five-bedroom home in Spring Creek and get back to where I work. And I just, I've been overwhelmed by the kindness that Habitat for Humanity has shown me at every single point. Have worked for the store. I've been at the office. They're awesome. They have restored my faith in humanity.
Thank you.
Hi.
Us short people have to lower the mic.
Hi, my name is Melville Jones-Mars, and I am currently living in Southwood. I've been there for almost four years. Prior to that, born and bred in Charlottesville, I actually have the privilege to say that I was the first black born at Martha Jefferson Hospital. My, I opened up the shelter for help and emergency, which you guys call SHE now, when it was off of Cherry Avenue. Okay. I raised four kids. All my kids are damn good. They're proud to be in Charlottesville. They're good kids. I was blessed last year from working since I was sixteen to retire. And I can't own nothing in this town. I can't rent anything. Nothing. Because all I get is my retirement check. And I didn't retire from this little crappy job. I retired helping women get out of Charlottesville and go into Richmond and save their lives. If you can't help us, we have nothing. All I need is a one-bedroom unit. You go in Albemarle County, you go in Charlottesville, and that's twelve and thirteen hundred dollars a month. That's ridiculous. Please, whatever you guys need to do to continue application so that people like me can have a door and a key, and when they walk in, they're proud. I thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, good evening. My name is Brian Chico Esteban. I'm a resident in Southwood. I would just like to start off by saying, we, the community, really want this and really need this. You know, we have been blessed with this opportunity. We have been blessed with Habitat for Humanity. They have been so helpful, and they're just a blessing from God. You know, I've been in Southwood all my life. I was born here in Charlottesville. My family, my mom and my dad, they've been here almost twenty years in Southwood. And, you know, it's, it's just a blessing being there. The community, you get many people from different parts of the world, and it's, there's no border between any of us. Everybody's so friendly. Everybody cares for one another, and it's just so beautiful. I just, you know, as I've been growing and as I've been maturing, I've noticed how powerful and how beautiful this community is. You know, from being like five years old, playing street football with my neighbors, to, I'm fifteen now, to being an adolescent, you know, I've noticed, and I've matured, and I've realized that there's something special about this community, and it's the people. So I come here to tell you that we really want this, and we can't do it without you. And we just hope, and I pray, and I just plead for you all to accept this Phase Two. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello. My name is Shereka. I have been a member of Southwood all my life. Just want a safe place for me to get in and out of the house.
And Shere, you might have to say your full name and do it again, because the recording didn't pick up.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Shereka. I've been a member of Southwood all my life. Just wanted a safe place to transfer in and transfer out safely. As you can see, Fred, I have so lovely. I just want a safe place for me to transfer in and out without any casualties.
Thank you.
A little bit taller. My name is Stephen Wingfield. Most people call me Woody. I live at five-eight-three Old Lynchburg Road, so the residents of Southwood are my neighbors. I am not affiliated with Habitat. We had a chance to speak with Dan once. Probably have much more in common with you all. I am an employee of the University of Virginia. Actually, Commissioner Vivins, I was hired about a year into the Development Office before you retired. Amy Ance says hello. If there's anything that the last couple of years have taught me, it's the gratitude. I don't make any apologies for working for UVA, and I'm very proud of the work we do. But more importantly, I'm grateful that it affords me an opportunity to live in Albemarle County. Four years ago, I was able to buy the home next to Southwood. The last couple of years, we've all been dealing with the pandemic in different ways, at a job that affords me an opportunity to work from home remotely. More importantly, in an environment that's safe. And I'm embarrassed to say that I didn't realize things were that bad, Dan. And I am grateful to the work that you all have done for my neighbors, and I would hope, you know, the university has its role to play in affordable housing in the area as well. But let's do what we can today for our friends, my neighbors, our neighbors, and probably our colleagues at UVA. I'm sure there are a few that are there. So I, as a university student in an upper-level Spanish class, actually had the opportunity to canvas the Southwood neighborhood with information in English and Spanish about the services offered by Albemarle County. My Spanish is garbage today, fifteen years later, but what I can do today is stand in support of my neighbors and hope that you all will do the right thing for the county and, again, for my neighbors and support this project. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Alex Partridge. I live just up the street off of Preston, and I'm a fourth-year Civil and Environmental Engineering student at the University of Virginia and also a longtime Habitat volunteer. I am here to provide yet another quote of support for this affordable housing project. Other speakers before me have pointed out the extent to which Habitat has gone both above and beyond the requirements and expectations in the planning of Phase Two for Southwood. Typical land development organizations would not go to the lengths to prioritize community engagement and acceptance that Habitat has done, not to mention the environmental remediation efforts, funding offers for externalities, and other efforts. It is fair to say that the redevelopment may affect traffic, traffic flow and school volumes. Those are very fair points, but it seems like a reason to pursue further solutions to these concerns, not to reject this proposal to meet affordable housing needs. If anything, I see this proposal as an opportunity for the county and the state to approach infrastructure projects that might need to happen anyway, even notwithstanding the changes outlined in Phase Two. In my view, Habitat's application, if approved, would more than do its job to support Albemarle County residents, and I hope the council can see eye to eye with them on the goals of this project. Obviously, previous speakers and Southwood residents could express this much more fully and eloquently than I could, but the tangible and intangible benefits to the Southwood community are not to be understated. Because of this, once again, I urge the council to approve Phase Two as presented. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jim Lohman, two-thirty-two Locs Spur Way in Lake Grenovia. I'm standing here as a, I began volunteering for Habitat forty years ago, both in this country and overseas, and I have to say, I'm incredibly impressed with what Habitat Greater Charlottesville has achieved thus far in this project, after fifteen years of engagement with this body and others in the county, and what they still are planning to do in this next Phase Two. I have to say, as being a neighbor just the other side of the park from Southwood, I am very much looking forward to the opportunity to be able to say that Habitat managed to keep all of those residents there on the site that wanted to be there and make it possible for them to be able to own their own homes there. That's just an incredible achievement, and I, like I say, I'm just incredibly impressed. I'm here as an architect. I work for UVA, project manager, and I am very much in favor of the current proposal. I'm not saying that there are not indeed things that can be improved, but I think if the past fifteen years have shown anything, they've shown that Habitat is engaged with the county and is engaged with the concerns and challenges that the county faces. I appreciate your all's efforts, your time, and I appreciate the staff's efforts as well. And I also cannot speak hardly enough in favor of this project, nor as eloquently as all of the residents that have already spoken. uh, nor as eloquently as all of the residents that have already spoken. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who wants to speak at the podium? We didn't get a chance yet. Okay. I don't see anyone coming forward. Um, we, we do have opportunity for the applicant to come back and say a couple of words. If you want, if there's anything else you wanted to add.
Thank you. It's, it's hard to follow. Uh, that was pretty moving. Um, no, I, I have nothing to, to add or rebut. Um, I'm looking forward to continuing dialogue with you all as you have your conversation. I'd love to, um, if you, um, have questions, bring me back up to the dais, uh, during your conversation if that would be helpful.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So with that, I'm going to wind my gavel and close the public hearing portion. We're going to now discuss this application amongst ourselves. If anyone has kids that need to get to bed or do their homework, we understand. Uh, but with that, um, commissioners, what are your thoughts?
Is it possible to take a break?
Before we debate? Yes, we, we'll, we'll take a, a five minute recess, uh, and then we'll come back to deliberate. All right. Calling this meeting back to order of the Albemarle County Planning Commission after a brief recess. We're now at the part in the meeting where the commissioners will deliberate on the application, the staff report and the comments from the public to inform what we decide to do tonight. And just briefly, for those of you who are new to the process, the planning commission will take a vote this evening on whether to move this forward or deny it. If we, yeah, if we move it forward to recommend it or if we deny it. And I just wanted to note that our, uh, recommendation is advisory to the board of supervisors who has the final decision. So we are an advisory body to the boards. This is not the final decision, uh, whatever happens here tonight. Uh, so with that, we'll bring it back to commissioners for discussion and impressions where you, what, you know, you've heard a lot of different things tonight.
I don't want to drag it out, but I do have one follow up question to staff, uh, if he's, if Mr. McDermott about Hickory Street, just to clarify.
If you need more information.
No, just a real quick clarification on Hickory Street. You, you made a comment that there was maybe deferred maintenance that the county needed to do for Hickory Street. Um, or you, you made some statement about maintenance obligation. I think it's the word term used for Hickory Street. I guess what I wasn't sure about is, um, is Hickory Street in its current configuration, if, if, if that maintenance obligation was implemented, could it support the traffic? Are there more substantive improvements that need to be made to Hickory Street to support this development?
Yes, um, we have been in conversations with, um, Dan from Habitat and, uh, our F E, our facilities director about ways that we might be able to do some, interim maintenance on the road, uh, for, for a time being to make sure that can, could, right now it is in very bad shape. Uh, and it needs some maintenance. So we have been talking about ways that we could do some interim maintenance to get it through for a while. Um, and, you know, we just have to continue those conversations to figure out how long we could, uh, make the road last under the additional traffic that we, you know, we might be expecting down there. Ultimately, we need to fix it. Uh, and just to clarify that, ma, the maintenance agreement that is on that road, it came with the Biscuit Run Park. So when the county took that over, we also acquired the maintenance agreement that the state used to have on that. But, and so that's why we're involved in it. And I think it's like, we're 30% responsible and Habitat's 30% responsible covenant or some percentage similar to that.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Maxon, that question, extend your question. Don't leave. So, so, you know, Hickory Street's a long street. So the parts that you were talking about, are you talking about the part that's in Southwood or the part that's outside of Southwood? And which one of those, if any of them, are public streets?
None of them are public streets right now. From, from the start, the entirety of Hickory is not a public street right now. Uh, and just to clarify, I want to use those percentages. Those were just generalized. It's really a little more complicated with that, with who's responsible for different pieces of it. So.
So, but right now we don't have a street that VDOT would accept into its network because it's not a public street.
And it's subpar.
And I was just going to get, and it's, and it's subpar. So.
Yes, that's correct. It, it was not constructed to what VDOT would accept at this time.
Thank you.
That's, no, it's okay. We can, I mean, we can go up and down the line or you can step forward with your impressions so far. I mean, we, you don't have to say this is how I plan to devote. We're, we're just deliberating on.
I'm, I'm happy to continue up. I think this is, uh, you know, this project is amazing. What we're faced with tonight is, uh, ask for expedience to try to capture some money to help with funding to the project that may, that happens to be federal funding. With, you know, incomplete information and, and, and not, not fully understanding how certain things are going to work out. Where I think is interesting that I didn't, I mean, thought about, but we've had this conversation a lot as planning commission is like proffers. And what is the value of affordable housing as a proffer versus what traditionally if this was a, a developer, we'd be putting a lot of screws to them to say, hey, you got to help fund all these improvements to this network. And we would see that as, okay, you want this, we got to improve the transportation. We got to do the schools. We got, that's how the traditional proffers. Well, what we're seeing with this application or what I'm wrestling with is they're not giving those kind of traditional proffers that we're used to seeing, or they're not, they're not phrasing it that way. They're saying, hey, let me increase affordable housing beyond the 15% or 10% that we kind of think about from the county as we ask for developers to do. And saying that's our proffer versus putting it into the network. And where I'm left with and trying to think about it, because we wrestle with this county, what's the county's responsibility within affordable housing? And it is proven all over America that the poor neighborhoods are disproportionately lacking in the infrastructure that is necessary to support their growth. And so that's, that's what I'm, I'm not, not saying one way or another, but that's what I'm wrestling with is that there's an opportunity. There's an amazing organization that, from what we can understand, has met milestones in phase one, has a track record of doing this, doesn't have all the information, is trying to be creative to capture money to help bring more affordable housing to the area. Um, and there is a sense of expedience. So we're asking to make, you know, a decision on this without all the information we typically want and to think about it a little bit outside the box of what we would typically want to see for proffers to make this project a go and to give it a green light. Um, because they're choosing to, to kind of put it in a shape that's different than what we would typically see. So that's where I'm trying to think, you know, I'm wrestling with and trying to evaluate what is outside the box of all the other applicants and applications we normally see to get something like this approved. So that's where my mind is and I would love to get the opinions and thoughts of my fellow commissioners.
If I can follow up on.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Bailey, because I have similar thoughts. So, you know, what I find unique about this, uh, development that we don't always see, we, you know, we've seen a lot of affordable housing. This was larger than most. But it's, it's the vision. I mean, this project has had a vision from the very beginning. And that's unique and rare to, to get that kind of vision and then also people that can actually see that through. So that is a combination that is really rare. And not just, I'm not just talking about here in Virginia. I've, I've lived all over. I've lived in South Florida. I've lived in California. I lived in New Mexico. Now here. So I've lived in a lot of places around this country and, um, it's, it's rare. And so I do applaud, um, not only Habitat, but the county and others. I mean, this is a, a P three, uh, initiative. Uh, and this is a way to get it done, to get affordable housing done. And so for all those reasons, I do, uh, applaud and, and support this project in many ways. The reality is that the scale of this project is not sustainable with the current infrastructure that we have. County is, is partly responsible for that as well. That is where my struggle begins is the magnitude of the project and the timing of it is not sustainable with the infrastructure. I think one of the, um, speakers tonight, and thank you for everyone coming out here, pointed out the county's, um, negatives and said they were not insurmountable. And I agree with that. They're not insurmountable, but I don't believe that there's been the time to work out some of these issues to sit down and talk about how do we partner in the fed, federal funds that are available? And how do we get there? Because it's not just about developing the private, the, the homes, but how do we get people moving in and out of them in a safe way? We've talked about safety in the community and in the homes, which is important, very important. There's also safety in the streets and how we move people through them. And we have that responsibility as well and thinking about, um, that safety holistically. And of course, the safety in the schools. If we have overcrowded schools, are they learning? And what kind of environments are we providing? So there are some issues that we need to think about. Uh, that unfortunately, this area of the county is not prepared for the magnitude of development that you're proposing, which is admirable, because it's, it's, you're, you're, you're really thinking, um, that not only creating a community that doesn't, well, that it, it exists because the people are there. Uh, so the community is there, but then taking it to a much larger scale, uh, and, and a, and a much safer, uh, community. So that's where I'm struggling is how do we get to a point where there could be the conversations that need to happen that I don't believe have happened. Uh, and that's evident by even some of the things that we heard today that were new. Um, I mean, the 100% engineering is certainly not in the report. So, so of the road of, of Hickory. So that's where I am. How do, how can we get to a point to make recommendations for conversations to happen, for partnerships to continue, particularly in pursuit of this additional federal money that, um, that is still out there. But, um, a lot of it is still questions in my mind. So I'm, uh,
Right.
Just posing them out.
So, um, this is a really challenging project. First of all, I can't begin to imagine a more well-visioned, envisioned, um, project, a more well, uh, engaged community and a more supportive, uh, project in general. Um, so I, I want to make that perfectly clear. And as, um, you know, a, a planning commissioner, I struggle a bit with the sort of dichotomy of roles that we have in a sense. One, on one side, supporting this admirable project, as I think you said, um, which is, seems kind of inadequate as a statement. It's beyond that. But, um, you know, supporting that and balancing that sort of, uh, with the county role that we have, to put it simply. And I, I've taken like three pages of notes of things that I've wanted to say and I've now completely confused myself. So I'm just winging it. Um, but the way I really think of this is sort of in three different buckets, right? One is sort of the mission, the vision, um, the support of families, um, the quality of life, the pride of place, the affordability, the environmental benefits. I could keep going on and on, right? So all of those extremely positive, necessary elements of a development that quite honestly, we don't obviously see in all commercial developments, right? So a little bit to your point, Commissioner Bailey. Um, on the far right side, I see sort of the county obligation, our role as commissioners. Um, the idea of funding, the idea of maintenance, ongoing maintenance in certain areas, whether it's trails, whether it's roads, a lot of the things that were said, um, proffers are voluntary, right? They're not things we can require. So that's out there. Um, and we are, I was appreciative of Chair Firehawk saying we're advisors, right? So thinking through that role. And then in the center, I don't know if it's a seesaw or what it is, but something sort of that's the fulcrum, right? Of this whole decision is funding and timing. And how do we think through that and balance that and address those issues? Um, you know, how much can the county of Albemarle afford? We all say affordable housing is admirable and required and I absolutely 100% agree with that. The question is how much it, how much is the county prepared to fund? How much is the county able to offer in terms of that? And, you know, we should say it should be unlimited, right? If you're really thinking about that, but it's in fact not. So then you start to think about the needs of the, of the community that you are within and the, the challenges that the school is facing and the roads. Those are really the two areas that, um, as I, I'd mentioned to the applicant earlier a few times, um, are areas of concern. You know, we saw, um, under the schools that there was a limited time horizon, that maybe that's something that could be talked about. Um, we saw the value, which felt a little bit arbitrary, right? 20% off the market. How was the market set? Um, there were no plans, um, one year, you know, of having developed projects for some time now. One year is, there's no way you could ever do that. So thinking about that timeframe and maybe there's some flexibility there as well. You know, under the transportation, I know the applicant said, I've got a place for the funding. I understand that. I, I know where that could come from. And to Commissioner Carazana's comments, the time to be able to talk through and think through that, I think is critically important. Um, what do I wish? I wish, uh, not necessarily for the magic wand, but that would be cool. I wish that there had been a little bit of time in advance of this for us to talk, to get some better, um, communication, some open communication with the applicant to understand ways that we could get to a point where, and I'm not saying we're not there, but tonight where we could just all say, hey, these things have been discussed and, and we're ready to go. Um, so I guess, uh, again, I'm not saying either, either direction. I just, those are the things that I would express. The last thing I'll say is I appreciated the applicant's offer to sort of almost workshop a bit with us, if that's appropriate, um, as we go through further discussion. Thank you.
Let's go next.
Sure. Um, I'll just touch on a few things before we, I guess, start breaking this, breaking this apart. Um, failure is not an option. That's the first thing I, I wrote down. This is a, a once in a generation project, right? Started in 2007 and projected to go to 2040. So failure is not an option. Um, and I said earlier that I, I strongly believe as part of my core values that everyone deserves a, a safe and healthy home and a vibrant neighborhood. And I don't think anybody disagrees with any of that, right? Uh, but I do want to emphasize that. Um, I like to think that there is a way for us to be able to talk through this and mitigate, we know the kind of partner that we have in Habitat for Humanity. I like to think there's a way that we can kind of take each of these things and kind of start to peel it back tonight to allow them to go for us. I'll be as bold to say that I'm going to support it, right? With the hope that we can have a, a great discussion and, and put something together that's a strong advisory recommendation to the board. So.
I think the first thing I need to just to declare is that, um, I, from a funder standpoint, have had my hands in a lot of Habitat projects from Esmont to Louisa to the one, the one, the, uh, the woman came and talked to us from the one on Sunrise, the one off of Rose Hill Drive over sort of a 30-year period. So I understand the work that we're talking about. I also understand that the work, the work that's, that's being hoped for at Southwood is because rules and conditions were not followed. And given those, that, that the infrastructure was allowed to fail at Southwood, we've got 300 and some odd people whose lives have been. We've got 300 and some odd people whose lives have been. Put in, in various degrees of, of, of. Of being spoiled and being held up across things. This is a $180 million project. A thousand new homes. I don't care how you call them, there's a thousand new homes. And I would have probably been very hell, very happy to have had a work session on this. I am not going to have a work session tonight on this. So I'm, I'm going to be real, I'm going to be clear on that. It is not my role right now to substitute for staff. There's some things on here that staff needs to work out with the applicant. That this commissioner is not going to do. And the reason I'm not going to do that, because the nuance on some of these issues are beyond my pay grade. Now, I know we have, we have. Architects on this, on this board, on this commission, we have of various stripes and degrees. But I also know this is not my place to negotiate something that's going to go to our supervisors. I think the, the staff members of this county should be given an opportunity to sit with the applicant and his team, which happens to be a very good team, and work out some of these pieces here. I am truly concerned about the fact that I was hopeful in phase one that we'd see commercial, non-residential space. I don't see any, according to staffs that it hasn't showed up in any, in any of the plans to date. I was hopeful that I'd see some tonight, no, I don't get a minimum, I get a maximum. And so that, that sort of pushes in me a bunch of things that were conversations from the last time when we did phase one. I sort of held off to the side. Is I'm going to give everybody the benefit of the doubt. At $180 million, my benefit of the doubt is probably a little bit shallow right now. I just need to say that. I think that Southwood is going to be a tremendous place. I also think Southwood is not ripe right now for phase two. I think there's some things that need to be dealt with in phase two. That it will come back, if we're not talking about breaking ground until 2025, we've got time. If anyone thinks that the feds are going to, are going to, are going to push that money out the door anytime soon, that is not going to happen. It's not going to happen. And the reason it's not going to happen, because every, every jurisdiction needs infrastructure. Every single jurisdiction in our country needs to have roads built, needs to have sewer, needs to have fresh water, needs to figure out why over these past years, nothing's been done. If you ever get a chance, Luis can, Luis can update us at some point about the number of bridges and just in our own community that are going to be looking for money, just from his time on, 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 on the MPO tech. It's astounding what our infrastructure looks like. I do not want to be the person who votes right now for a bunch of stuff, and I don't know whether or not the infrastructure is good. We had the gentleman come and talk to us, saying that they, that so far, so far, and this is the, this is the part of the land that has the most homes on it. So far, we've got sewage issues, we know that they've identified. We've got buried oil tank, oil. Tanks that we know of. We've got all kinds of, the various components of, 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 of sewages, the sort of the lines and all that stuff. We have no idea when they start breaking ground, what that's going to look like. And it could pose, it could pause the, the, the development for a number of years. As they're, as they're doing remediation on that site. I have only simply to tell us about the site in Croze, up Three Chop Road, on the left-hand side as you go there, that was, I think, Acme. That me filed place. That is now just finishing its, its, its reclamation. And that, and that, and that site's been, been down for a lot of years. So for me, this is a great project, no doubt about it. Is it ripe? For me, it's not ripe. And I am not going to sit up here and negotiate with. I'm thinking about, I'm going to negotiate solutions when I don't have any benefit of any of the discussions that took place. And I'm going to negotiate solutions when I'm not an expert in the things that we're going to negotiate solutions on. Colleagues, I cannot do that.
Well, I'll, I'll give my two cents as it stands right now. So I think one of the biggest debates here tonight is whose job is it to provide schools? And the county has made the state, you know, it's our policy that we want to build up in the urban ring so that we can preserve the other 90 some percent of the county is rural. Consolidate our services where they're cheaper to provide more efficient, et cetera. There's many reasons why we have this policy. And yet, at the same time, I don't see the county moving with the alacrity, with the speed that is required if we're going to facilitate the infill that we want to see. And that is why the county hasn't gone forward and just gone ahead and did, done what Charlottesville did now twice, which is to rezone the entire area around the, the urban ring to exactly what we want. To the density that we intend, and then we pay for the infrastructure that's needed. That, that is a big price tag. But if you think about the fact that it saves us a tremendous amount of money by not just sprawling out, as some of our neighboring counties have done. So. That said. I think we also owe it to the people who currently live in our urban ring. Both those in Southwood, as well as the neighboring neighborhoods, to make sure that the schools that we do provide are quality schools. You know, we've seen multiple schools in our county with kids going to school in trailers. And I guarantee you that when that first trailer went in, they said, this is temporary, little temporary problem. These kids are being in trailers for decades. And I don't know about you, but I, I never went, I went to public school, but I never went to school in a trailer. And so, you know, this is my biggest problem with the application as it stands now is that the county, whether the county's job is to provide that school, whether it's Southwood's job to provide land or not. We can debate that all night, but I think the point is that I don't see that solution having been worked out. And in defensive staff. They did talk to the applicant about the school issue, and they did not find. The applicant was willing to try to figure out more of a solution than what has been proposed so far, which is, just to remind everyone, that they, the county can buy the, the five, or 5.7 acres for around $9 million. And then the county will also be responsible for relocating any trailers that are on that parcel. So you have to add, you know, another million or so on top of that. In, in order to, we have to provide that housing. And then on top of that, we have to build a school. I think if I was on the school board, if I was sitting in the board supervisor chair, I would be paying for that school. The problem is the county has no, the, the planning commission has no authority or role in funding schools or planning for schools. And yet, we're supposed to advise our county on whether development is ripe to move forward, whether they have done their due diligence to put the infrastructure in place ahead of time. So that our kids, you know, don't have to hear how, I'm sorry that you had to go to school in a trailer for a decade of your childhood. We just couldn't get it together. And so for that reason, I would like to see this development. Work with the county to figure out a solution, whether it's the county buys the land, whether some sort of commitment. And, you know, I know that there's going to be some pushback somewhere potentially with this notion of the small site. I mean, I went to an inner city school. It was not bigger than 5.7 acres, I guarantee you. And, and because this development is next to a new state park. The county's going to be investing in playing fields there, so it would be relatively easy. For kids to, you know, if they want to play soccer or whatever, some field sport, they can go over there and use those fields and still have a small tight urban footprint. I think that, you know, I know there's people here tonight who want to buy the marquardt housing, but I think it would make it very attractive. You could walk to school. I walked to school. I've never ridden a school bus in my life. It's possible. So, you know, the fact that the county and, and the applicant have not worked out the problem with the school situation. And my lack of faith. In the, in that going forward makes me unable to support this going forward at this time. I'd be willing to entertain a deferral. So that it could move faster, but I, I can't. At this stage of, I'll call it non-negotiations. That we're at. And, and I think that I have been mocked in the public, not by anybody here, but by, you know, allowing developments to go forward that added 20 children to the school. And, and been said that Karen Firehawk doesn't care about children and all kinds of terrible things. I do care about children, but at, at some point, we need to make a strong statement to our own county that we need this infrastructure in place. So that's, that's where I'm coming down. It's very difficult. I want to say to the people in the audience that I lived in roach-infested apartments with no heat and leaking roofs. I had a Piedmont Housing Alliance help to get my first home. So I have been in your shoes, not all the way. But to some degree, I do appreciate, I couldn't have gotten my first house if I didn't have somebody helping me. So it is very personal. But. I, I just don't have enough faith. That if we move this forward, that there will be some magic signal that the, the school board should move forward and, and go urban on the school design. And that the county will leap forward and buy that property. I, I just can't have that faith because I've seen stalling and stalling and stalling. And when I talk to the, some folks in the school board, they say the county doesn't give us enough money. We wanted more schools, we didn't get it. When I talk to some folks in the county, I'm not going to name, I hear, well, the school board doesn't have a good plan. But you know, that's the blame game going two ways. All I can do as a commissioner is to say, are we ready for this large development with our school system? And right now we are not, and I don't see a concrete enough plan in place. For us to do that. So that's, I don't want to keep talking on, on and on, but that's kind of what's my big holdup on this one. You might just in a moment, let's, I will give you a chance to say something, go ahead.
Thanks. I just want to echo one thing about the school system and the question that you shared so passionately, and that is the, you know, this, the responsibility of the county and understanding what that is. And I, I have often seen, always really seen the responsibility of the school systems and the expansion of the schools. It seemed to me to be a requirement or actually a responsibility of the county to keep up with the path of growth and that those two things should run side by side. And, you know, we've seen such an increase in residential rezonings in the county. And there have been other conversations about schools with other developers as well, and there have been findings where the county is really the responsible party, and they should be looking after the schools. I think, you know, for me, I guess a question is, in, in this case, it does. I, I understand the impact of this development of a thousand homes. I also understand that those 1,000 homes are not going to be built overnight. It's going to take time to implement those homes. And, you know, it's, it's the crystal ball, right? We don't know whether the schools are going to be expanded, if there'll be funding available to be able to keep up with that phasing plan for Southwood Phase Two, right? But, you know, I don't know, I'm just, just thinking about the ideal situation would be that the phasing, the growth of that thousand homes would be able to move forward, parallel with a school system advancing and growing. And I'm not sure we can get assurances that that's going to happen because it's really not up to the developer. It's really more up to the county, I think, and maybe more the responsibility of the county. One quick, well, I'll stop there.
Yeah, I just, I'll just say that I wish that I could have the faith that if we just made a strong recommendation saying, you've got to work this school thing out. And, you know, when it goes to the board, they should commit to something. But in the short time period between now and us voting something and going to the board, there's not enough time for those conversations to have been held and for decisions to have been made and for school board members to have kind of come along to this notion of an urban campus. Which, which they need to, because we're going to have to build other urban schools. And we can't be running around looking for 20-acre sites in the urban ring. It's just, it's not, it's not practical at the prices of land in the county. But I guess because I've served on the CIP and I watched the school board ask for two schools, they got one. People don't want to pay more in taxes, maybe, to fund the schools, to fund the growth. But this is a little different than a county that's saying, gosh, growth just keeps coming and we have to keep accommodating it and it's making our head spin and it's so hard to keep up. Our county has said that they want to develop densely in the urban area. We have called for that. But where is the financial commitment behind that? We need more parks, we need more schools, we need more bike lanes, we need, there's so much that we need. And if we want a growth to, to be fair to the residents who are already here, then we need to create quality communities. So I, I guess I, because I've, I've sat in this chair, this is, you know, like, you know, for a while. And I've been on the CIP and just watching the process, I just lack the faith that our leadership will step up and take care of this problem before, even though it's four years out, five years out. That, and that's just, that's my bias. I can't, I can't tell you that's the truth. I can just tell you what I've observed of living in the county as long as I have.
Yeah, I, I don't want to change. I agree with what they're saying and change on the school system, but there's also the other thing, like the school system, I'm still confused on what, how many net new, and there's a bunch of numbers thrown around, and I don't think we have clarity on what the actual impact could be. I think that's the thing to work out and not, not taking away, but I mean, it's just how do we make that call for everything you said, and we need better information to, to play our role as a planning commissioner for a school. But I think there, there's the other part, that the whole justification or the whole impetus for this was there's a set of money out there that we could go after to help with infrastructure and all this other stuff, but. We need this to happen from our, you know, what, what I, and I, I don't have clarity on it, so I don't really know. It's like some conversation between staff and the applicant about what is required for the applicant to pursue said money? Does it need the zoning to happen? That's, that's what was, that's what I was kind of informed to believe, but I'm actually not really sure if it needs to happen or what needs to happen for, for that funding source to be pursued. Like I, I just don't, I didn't really clearly pull it out, maybe I missed it in all the documentation that this, this resoning must happen for that money to be pursued. And I don't know what that dependency chain is.
And I think Julian's point earlier was that Mr. Bivin said, you know, this federal infrastructure money is not going to fall off a cliff on July 1st. There's this grant, that grant, the next grant. I mean, I run a nonprofit, you know, I think I couldn't get my act together to get this money by this period, but I can go for it again in six months. I can go for it again in 12 months. So each time that we have discussed Southwood, it has been an emergency and you need to hurry up. And the time is now and it's urgent. And, you know, there's been a period of years since they, they came for phase one. And so I don't quite understand why we're in an emergency at this time.
Yeah. That's fair points, and I don't have that historical knowledge. And, you know, I would just say wherever we go with this, like, I would encourage that conversation to happen. I'll say, you know, and I don't take, I moved seven times from birth to graduating high school. Every time rent got more expensive, we moved. So I understand that, I understand that intimately. And I would love to see this project go forward, but we do have to do. Due diligence, we have to think through it and we have to plan effectively. I, you know, I think that the applicant has been waving to say something, so I don't want to.
And I am going to let Mr. Rosen say something at some point.
Let's do that.
All right. Dan, you were going to add something to this conversation. We don't usually let the applicant come back up, but this is a complex one, so I'm going to make an exception.
I very much appreciate that, and I appreciate the deliberation. I think I have some stuff to add that might help the, the bit of the impasse. First of all, thank you, Commissioner Bailey. This isn't a made up emergency. This is a real emergency having to do with funding that's available now, and this goes to Mr. Carranza's question about how do we move this forward? It feels like a chicken and the egg, it's not a snake. It's not a chicken or the egg, it's, it's actually the egg. We have put in applications. We have worked with county staff to put in applications for funding that has now been allocated. And, and we were told that it met every criteria. It was sort of the perfect thing. This is for the sewer line, this is for ARPA funding that is now gone. And we were told that until zoning happens, that the, the county, the county can't really, they can't really do it. And that's, that's been kind of the unofficial policy of the county right now. Until this thing moves forward, we cannot put in an application for this money. And Mr. Riven's, the, the money does go fast. ARPA is almost, that ARPA was allocated last year and it is almost gone. So, but I can say a couple of things, and I totally understand about not wanting to negotiate from the dais. I was a planning commissioner for eight years, and I, I get that. I'm willing to give, I don't want to negotiate. I've heard a lot tonight, and I heard a lot in the staff report, and I've already mentioned some of the things I think that can move us forward. So first of all, in terms of, so I, I think that there are really two sets of issues. There's land use issues, and then there's off-site improvement and off-site impact issues. On the land use side, I think it's pretty easy that the staff was looking for a floor of commercial square footage. Mr. Bivin's talked about disappointment in the first phase, we were disappointed too. We are absolutely willing right now to commit to that, have that be part of your recommendation. We are absolutely willing right now to commit to that, have that be part of your recommendation to a minimum of 10,000 square feet of commercial in Phase Two. The other piece, too, really moved by the comments of Peter Krebs from PEC. For those of you who weren't on the commission before, the residents did not originally, they did not want a complete street on Hickory because they don't like, bike lanes are for kids, bikes are for kids from the resident's perspective. And so that's why, that was the impetus for the two-mile loop trail. But I also recognize that now in this conversation, Hickory is becoming an area of throughput, it's a through street. And so we're willing to commit to a 10-foot asphalt multi-use path running the whole length of Hickory as part of this, and we're willing to commit to it tonight, if that helps yet another mode of alternative transportation. In terms of the schools, I totally get it. I totally get it. But, and that's why we gave a sort of an arbitrary, I think someone said, you know, that one year was arbitrary, it was kind of arbitrary, but we're willing to extend that and work with the school division leaders. It wasn't that we weren't willing, we had conversations. But I don't think, honestly, this, to your point, this firehawk, the county knows what it wants, yet it honestly doesn't. Some people want a 20-acre school site, some people want a seven. We're willing to extend that period of time, and we're willing to take on the responsibility of rehousing as well, that's what we do in partnership with the county. So we're willing to do that, we're willing to make that commitment tonight. Terms of transportation, we talked about this before, and again, this goes to Mr. Carranza's question about how do we unloosen this money? I don't think you can get federal funding to pay for the stretch of Hickory between Southwood and Oak unless we're involved. Because the federal infrastructure money is specifically for serving low-income communities, it's biased towards serving low-income communities. If we go in on a joint application for the entirety of Hickory from Old Lynchburg Road to Oak, then that application is most likely going to be successful. And we're going to have a funding source that isn't available with the county going in on its own. And incidentally, we have been actually, there is a joint maintenance agreement, we have paid for 100% of the maintenance of that entire road for 15 years, because no one else has done it. So we've gone ahead and done it off, so we're happy to offer that today. I don't know what format would take in terms of a commitment, but we're willing to proffer a commitment that when we make application for funding for Hickory, that it includes the entirety of that street. So I think we can get there, but, and a deferral is, you know, the deferral is a great tool of a planning commission, we don't have time. We frankly don't have the time, so I'm asking you to move this forward. The way the docket works right now, they're still backed up, that it's probably three months before it gets to the board anyway, which does give us some time to work on some of these issues. But with what I've offered, what I'm committing to tonight, if that goes into your recommendation, I think we can move this forward. And I would really appreciate this moving forward tonight.
Okay, thank you. If you have a specific question for staff.
I mean, I mean.
We don't have, unfortunately, no one here from the school board.
Right, well, you know, the school board, I want to sort of bifurcate the whole county argument here. We all realize that the school board is the one that comes up with the capacity plan, and then brings that to the Board of Supervisors, who then say, we can bring some, you know, we can bring some money. So it's not vice versa. So the supervisors are going to say to the school board, bring us a new school. And as we saw is happening in down 64, where the legislature is not letting jurisdictions go to their own, go to their own people to say, do you want a referendum so we can do tech, so we can go to bond market? There's a multi-leveled sort of set of obstacles that have been put up today on how we get there. But that not what's, I just needed to sort of bifurcate that whole thing there. What's just been laid out before us is very, is helpful, but again, I will say, I need to be informed by our staff on whether or not the various items that have been said there can in fact help with the infrastructure piece on Hickory Road. I don't have Frank Poole here, who's our engineer, to say whether or not the sewage issue can be solved by going to the, going, getting the funds that are available, that can go there. And I don't know if our staff person, who's staff report this is, thinks that this solves this, that what we just heard is enough to solve the concerns that staff put before us. You know, so I just think, I get it, but I also want to be very clear about what we're doing.
Well, if you have, understanding that some of your staff you just listed are not here and are probably not going to be brought down.
Which is, which is part of why I'm concerned about us saying.
There are a few staff here with some expertise, so if you want to ask them.
I would, you know.
You want them to come forward and address.
I would, yes, I would like to hear particularly about the Hickory Road, and I don't know whether or not Rebecca's informed enough about some of the pieces that the applicant has shared, but I would, you know, I can evaluate it.
Right. I know it's rough on staff to ask you to evaluate things in the moment, but.
And I would just add, in terms of conversations of these partnerships to unlock these funds, what kind of conversations have you been having with the applicant? And, you know, are these conversations that you believe can yield these additional funds?
I can't comment on any funding questions. I can only comment on the review of Phase Two. Stacy has some, is our knowledgeable staff person here as far as some of the funding and the timing issues, if you're talking about.
I'm asking, have you been having conversations about partnering to pursue additional federal money that's out there for infrastructure?
I'll let Stacy take that one. And Kevin as well, with transportation.
I and members of our grants team and finance and budget have been reviewing which federal grants are out there and determining which ones we can partner on to do that. Part of the problem with the ARPA funding is that it needed to be committed and almost fully funded or expended by the end of 2024, which is why we, the finance team did not recommend providing those funds to this project. But we are looking at the infrastructure bill funding, we are looking at various types of community development block grant programs that are out there, looking at Virginia Brown Fields grants. So we are looking at ways that we can bring those funds to the project.
And you would partner with the applicant?
Yes, yes, where, so there are some programs that they can do that on their own, but most of the federal grants, we will have to do those together, and we will, absolutely.
Regarding the proposal for Hickory Street, the 100% design funds are wonderful, I think that would really help whether or not we can move forward with a grant immediately. So that's, I think that's a positive. I'd also say, I mean, I have to discuss the grant opportunities for that. I currently don't know of any existing grants that are, that there is a notice of funding availability for, that we could go for that right now. So it's just to say that I don't know, I'd have to sit down and talk through those grant opportunities with them. And getting to the 30% or additional money, I think that's great. No matter what, I think that with the site plan that they would submit for Phase Two, they're going to have to fix that section, the piece of Hickory within their property. Yeah, so that, I think, we're all in agreement, we understand that has to happen, one way or the other. It's really from the edge of their property out to that Oak Hill neighborhood, that we would like to all work together to just bring that up to the state standards, including bike and ped facilities through the whole way. I'm not sure, I mean, it is a great opportunity, I think if we could get that piece fixed, that relieves some of the county's pressure on the other pieces that we have out there. So anytime we can get one project done, that frees up opportunity to start on the next project, and that's how we work through it. But I, once again, I guess we just have to sit down and discuss sometime between any now and any approvals, how we can move forward with getting, what opportunities for grants are out there, and how we can work together to get them.
Okay, thanks. All right. Is there anything else you want to add? You don't, I don't want to put pressure on you to feel like you have to rewrite a staff report on, in your head.
No, I mean, and that's, I think y'all are, we're all understanding of where we are with some of this new information tonight, and the additional work that needs to be done. We have tried to meet as much as we could internally with other departments to, you know, start tackling these things and looking for those creative partnerships that we want to continue. We just aren't going to be able to provide any, and I don't think we could, like you've said, there's not a lot of concreteness right now.
Right.
That we can provide you on the fly.
Thank you. Okay. So, you know. Now, I think we, I think we have enough information. You know, it is, it is a question of timing, and whether or not you think that it is that, I think the county supports this project. This project is going to happen.
Yes.
It's going to happen. I think it's just, it is, it's a question of whether it's ready to go forward now, and how, you know, how much of a leap of faith you have or want to take, that all these pieces can be worked out, that we are not going to be sitting here in five years, I know it's past your terms, but.
That's mine, that's definitely past mine.
Come and hang out.
No, that's definitely past mine.
Okay, four years, 3.7 years, whatnot. We're sitting here and we're saying, gosh, it's too bad no one ever really took them up on that urban school. And it's too bad that the school board couldn't decide how to solve the overcapacity issue, and it's too bad the CIP didn't put too much money in there. Just, you know, I do agree with the speaker who said, all these problems are surmountable. We can build a school, we can fix the roads. I even wonder how this bus is going to go through Southwood to these two bus stops, because we don't have good bus transportation in an urban ring yet. You know, all of that has to be worked out. But I also am thinking about a neighborhood and a community that I hope is still here 100 years from now. And in order to make that a good community, I just think that sometimes you have to make the hard decision of taking a breath and making sure that things are worked out and sending a clear signal that the county wants this stuff to be worked forward. And I think it's fine for us to send a message to the Board of Supervisors that we want you to figure this out with the school board in Southwood. Again, this is above our pay grade, we don't provide funding in the planning commission, we don't build schools, you know. So it's frustrating because it isn't something that we can decide. But I think that our job is to say, is this project ready to go forward? And we may have some disagreement up here tonight, and that's okay. There's no requirement that we be unanimous, but I think that I have enough information, I'm not, I did learn a lot tonight, and a lot of it favorable, so that was helpful. But I think I kind of know, I haven't changed my mind so much.
Could I just ask a process question?
Yeah.
Is it possible for us to approve things with conditions?
You can, you can put conditions on the application because it's a rezoning, but it has to be germane to the, to the, to the impact, right? You can't just, like, say they should have free ice cream south, you know, has to be something, that's a good idea, though.
So Commissioner Missl, if I might, so what's before the commission tonight is the application as submitted. So we've heard a lot of comments about commitments that the applicant's willing to make. But again, what's before the commission is the application that's been presented, and it's up to the commission to vote either for, to recommend approval of what's been submitted, or recommend denial of what's been submitted. It's conceivable that the, that the commission could choose to recommend approval if certain conditions were met, if certain impacts were addressed. It's not up to the commission to request or require proffers. But if the, but if the commission believes that there are unaddressed impacts, the commission could make as part of its motion a statement that certain impacts would need to be addressed before the commission would feel comfortable recommending approval.
So, I'm sorry, this may be a dumb question, but we can, can we recommend approval with these conditions that we would like to see addressed before?
So it's conceivable that the commission could recommend approval provided that certain impacts were addressed.
Thank you.
Right, but we can't negotiate a proper back and forth.
Yeah, understood.
Okay. Unless anyone else wants to wrestle with any of these points, is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I'll give a motion a shot.
Okay.
Bear with me on this language. So, considering the fact that every application stands on its own, and that precedent was a concern of mine initially, but because of that, it's not. And considering that this is a unique applicant who we have known as a community for years, and has been shown to have great credibility, and is showing in tonight's conversation a continued good faith to collaborate with county staff, and acknowledging county staff amazing work, as always, thank you for that, and also acknowledging that there is work to still be done. Also, I'm almost done here, schools are still a major issue in my mind, and as part of the representative for this Scottsville district, I feel a special responsibility to underscore that and to work with whatever means is necessary at the county level to help with that issue. I do believe strongly that if the county really wants affordable housing, that they need to step up, and they need to address this issue, and perhaps this process will help move that forward more expeditiously. You said timing or a leap of faith. I'm willing to take that. My sense is that I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ZMA 2021 00013, Southwood Phase Two, with a provision that certain aspects of the conditions be addressed as outlined by staff, with specific focus on two things. One is what we have on record that the applicant stated tonight, in terms of the willingness to obviously continue to negotiate, be flexible, not specifically saying that those were approvable, but, or that I'm supporting those in their exact wording, but just the fact that the intent was there, and that that's the right direction, as we heard also from staff. But also, you know, continuing to focus on the five areas that staff has outlined that are potentially unfavorable to this rezoning request.
To clarify, you would like to have these addressed before the Board of Supervisors?
Ideally, yes.
Okay.
Second.
I just want to check with counsel if that motion was worded clearly enough.
So Commissioner Missl, is your motion to recommend approval provided that the conditions unfavorable in the staff report are addressed prior to the Board of Supervisors' hearing, is that your motion?
How do you define addressed? I would say that they need to be continue, there needs to be that continued dialogue with staff. And whether staff walks away with feeling 100% that they've met the, those, that they can now say those are no longer conditions of approval, or sorry, commissions unfit, factors unfavorable. I would allow for the fact that staff may still not recommend, that there still may be unfavorable conditions when they go to the Board of Supervisors, but that they would continue the dialogue and work towards that.
So I think that the chair's concern is just being able to measure whether or not those have been successfully addressed.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to attach a good faith effort to a motion.
Yeah.
So you can make, you could actually make a cleaner motion, and then make a statement following that you would like these things to be included in the record, that we want to see these things addressed between our vote and the board.
That's, that would be the amendment to my motion.
So I'm sorry, could you just repeat that?
I hope so. I'm going to give it a try. So my amended motion is that I do recommend approval of the ZMA as outlined in the staff report. I would like to add to that the desire that continued efforts with staff are undertaken, specifically focused on. specifically focused on schools, transportation, and the other three areas that staff has outlined as condition, as factors unfavorable.
That's really up to the board, to the commission to decide whether that's specific enough. I have my doubts that it is, but.
I think you should just, we've done this before, just make a clean motion.
Okay.
Recommending approval. And then we can also make some statements after the vote that we like these, the applicant and the staff to work diligently with the, the school board and whatnot to.
What you're saying is exactly my intent. So that's, that's great.
Yeah, so I believe we can be more specific on some of the points that you're raising in terms of school board traffic and and land use. And so I think that we can, we can be specific on the, the commercial. I don't know if it offer ten thousand, that's a significant decrease from what was initially proffered in phase one, and not sure how much we're going to get there.
But you could, you could ask them to have an offer, offer a minimum.
Correct, so we can have an.
And not state what that is.
So we can be clear on that on land use. I believe we can be more specific in terms of, of looking for and identifying funding strategies for Hickory. So between the two, they can work together to identify a funding mechanism for Hickory.
Infrastructure.
And infrastructure, that's, internal, internal, internal infrastructure. So there's clarity on, 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 on a fund source. And then I will, I will ask for this, how you want to handle the school issue, if someone has specific ideas on a motion there.
I don't know that we can get the meetings that need to happen to happen between now and the board.
So there can be more clarity on the proffer, right?
The sunset clause would need to be removed and some of those things. I think like it's some of the, the, there was language, from what I understand, about the school site that put kind of unrealistic expectations for the process to play out, whether that was a good site. So one of the questions would be is like, yes, we, we need to have conversations between school board and county and all that. But one, one concrete thing would be rework the offer of that site with less timeline or sunset clause.
With a more flexible timeline to allow adequate dialogue to occur on appropriateness of that site and blah, blah, blah.
Right.
So, so commissioners, my, my concern is not just the specific, but the measurable. How would, how would we know if that condition was achieved prior to the Board of Supervisors? That, that's my, my main concern, rather than continued discussions in good faith. I believe that the condition should be more specific and measurable.
If I might suggest, it's to remove the one year.
Yes, to expand, to remove the, the deadline for the school negotiation. Okay, which is real quick, because we use, we have to really care for not negotiating.
No, no, I understand. And I'm totally happy to, to stretch it. You can't, I can't remove forever because you can't tie up a piece of land in perpetuity. I don't even think that that's constitutional. But like, we certainly be happy to negotiate a specific, a longer timeline.
The staff to determine a reasonable timeframe for that conversation to occur, whether that's three years or what.
Yeah, trying to take some notes here. Okay, so I'm going to amend my motion. And I'm going to add as conditions for my recommended approval the following. One is establishment of a minimum square footage related to the non-resident, residential uses. Number two is continued negotiation and discussion of strategies for funding infrastructure.
Perhaps you might just say identify.
Identify.
Strategies. They can identify and then dislist them.
Okay, identify funding strategies for infrastructure. Clarify the fact that, and I know this will be in the record, but the hundred percent of the engineering drawings will be covered for the road, yeah, Hickory. And then finally, that the sunset clause for the school site be amended and were extended through discussions with staff.
And the school board.
And the school board and others who might have interest.
So Madam Clerk, did you get all that?
Oh, but I'll listen to the recording.
Okay. And, and so, so Commissioner Missl, so your motion is to recommend approval, provided that those four conditions are met?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there a second to the amended? Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll add, I'll add something just in response to the discussion. And I'm glad we could get to this point to at least talk about it. You know, I actually visited Southwood. I don't know anybody there, right? So I've visited. I thought that was important before I came here. And, and the one thing that stands, I have a, first, I have a ton of respect for all of my colleagues up here. But when I hear that sentences like, this is going on for years, there's three more months. Our reaction is, you live in that condition for ninety more days. You do it, right? And so that's why I'm glad we could have this conversation. But when you live in a condition like that, every day matters, right? And so I'll end it with that. But again, I will support this motion, so.
Right, well, I think, I think seeing no other entries to talk, I think we're ready to call the roll vote.
Okay. Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Bivins?
No.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
No.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion passes, and this will now move forward to the Board of Supervisors with the additional conditions and to the applicant, hey, wait for you before each here, to the applicant. I just really want to emphasize the importance of, of having that dialogue and trying to work through honest negotiations to see if we can move this forward. And I also think to take Mr. Missile up on his offer to try to do what he can to get those conversations to happen. I think that this commission is very supportive of an urban school if that can work out. And thank you for, I'd smile, say thank you to everyone who came out tonight, whether you already went home or you're still standing. We really appreciate that civic engagement.
Just a, just a quick, I just want to say again, thank you to the staff. This is a really hard project and y'all don't often get a lot of credit. So thank you for the work they're doing and your willingness to work with applications on this.
Agreed.
Okay, so we'll take a five-minute recess while we just give you guys a chance to clear the chamber, or you're welcome to stay and hear staff reports. All right, thank you. We're going to call this meeting back to order. If you're excited to continue, please come sit down. If not, please flee. So with that, we, I want to note that we are not going to hear the Rye Road corridor plan this evening because we want to pay good attention to the Rye Road plan with our full and complete brains. So we will wait and defer that until, I wrote it down. Oh, no, I, you already told me and I've written it in my four hundred notes.
Yeah, good evening. We have our work session in May.
May twenty fourth.
So I will bump things around and we will do that at four o'clock at our May twenty.
You said May twenty fourth, yep. So instead, we will have committee reports and then a report from the Board of Supervisors meeting. Does anybody have any committee reports?
Do we get any more food? Because tonight's was lovely.
Want dessert now? Do we have committee reports? Mr. Carazano, are you moving your mic forward to make a committee report?
No, I do not have a committee report.
Okay, okay, I, they were either have no committee reports or refuse to say. Meeting is breaking down rapidly. So I will now ask for the report of the Board of Supervisors meeting from April twenty, twenty twenty-two.
Luckily, given the hour, there were no public hearings for us on C D D for that evening, so we didn't have any applications to the board, nothing to report.
Wow, okay. Good to just put that in my chair agenda. All right, so with, with that, any old or new business? Please say no.
I just want this, I want the supervisor procedure to come before us sooner than later.
The supervisor procedure?
So that if, if any of us needs to be in another place, but yet come in by Zoom, that we have the ability to do that.
So Commissioner Bivins. So our office is working on that. But, but given the hour of the evening and the chair's admonition that we not dwell on, I'm happy to, I'm happy to go into a little bit of detail on that right now, but given the hour of the evening, I'm happy to address that at the next meeting as well.
I just wanted to say, that's all.
It is, it is in progress, and I would expect, as, as the commission may or may not be aware, the General Assembly did pass new legislation this year that become, that takes effect on September first. And we fully intend to have a policy ready for either the Board of Supervisors to approve or for the commission to review and approve prior to September first that would allow limited remote participation. Unfortunately, the planning commission is not allowed to have all virtual meetings going forward under the new state law. But, but it has been liberalized in terms of remote participation. And again, we'll be, our office is working on a policy that we can bring forward for your review before the law becomes effective on September first.
Thank you.
I just want to ask a quick follow-on. Is that, does that mean? I mean, in, in the past iterations of this, I've heard it being limited to two times a year and whatnot. Is that, is that where it would be leaning?
That, that is correct, but the state law specifically excludes boards of supervisors, planning commission, school boards, ARBs and BZAs from allow, for having any all virtual meetings. Other advisory bodies such as CACs, potentially. There are other bodies that are allowed two or three virtual, all virtual meetings a year. Planning commission is not one of those bodies that's allowed that.
Well, we'll wait for your report, which will, I'm sure be thorough. All right, so nothing else? If not, I'm going to.
I will not be here on the twenty, May twenty fourth.
Okay, well, you can read the plan and then send some comments. All right, so with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting of the Planning Commission to Tuesday, May tenth, twenty twenty-two. Yeah.